Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. It is Monday, January 23rd, 2023. Thanks, everyone, for joining us here in the council chambers and watching online. We will begin our meeting as we always do. If you could, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, welcome and thanks for joining us this evening. Our first item of Business Council is to adopt our agenda. Our agenda this evening includes three different things in our introductory items: the appointment of a new city council member at large, introduction of new employees, and then an update on the Welcome to Bloomington Design Group, which I'm looking forward to hearing. Councilmember Nelson has her Consent business tonight, and we've got nine items on the Consent Agenda. Under Hearings and Resolutions, we have two public comment opportunities. We've got a 4.1, which is a public comment opportunity regarding the Bloomington Sales Tax Resolution, and then Item 4.2 is an actual public hearing regarding amendments to our Earned Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance. Under Item 5, our Organizational Business, we'll be talking about our Sign Ordinance. That'll be an update. It's kind of a study item issue. And then we'll wrap up the evening as we always do with Item 5.2, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. Council, any changes, additions, or subtractions from tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. And just noting, Councilmember Carter is joining us remotely this evening in a public location, so we're gonna have to do all of our votes via roll call again tonight. So we've got a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Mr. Brillert.
Councilmember Carter?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter's having audio difficulties hearing. I will use the chat feature to notify her when it's her turn to vote.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, she said she'll call into the number, but she will stay on the video. So she'll be doing audio separately, I believe.
All right.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Mayor Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. First item on our agenda is the appointment of a new council member at large. Because we have an audio issue, now that we've adopted the agenda, I'm gonna adjust the agenda. I'd like to move on to Item 2.2 if we could, and even if necessary, 2.3, so we make sure that Councilmember Carter has her audio working and can participate in the discussion and the ultimate voting for the council member at large seat. So we're gonna move to Item 2.2. We're gonna jump to that, and we will come back to Item 2.1. Item 2.2 is our introduction of new employees, and we have a handful now of new employees to welcome to the city of Bloomington this week. We've got folks from Park and Rec, from financing, from community development. Why don't we start with Park and Rec? And I see folks coming forward to introduce our newest employers, or employees.
Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening, Allison, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to introduce our newest employee here, Andy Ranzow, and she is our Office Support Specialist. I'll let her tell a little bit about herself, but we are already very appreciative of her excellent organizational skills, technology aptitude, and just her positive customer service attitude. But this is Andy.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Andy Ranzow. I'm from Maple Grove originally. I lived there until I went to school in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, studied some Spanish and some music, some areas of interest to me. Since school, I worked in a wide variety, everything from nonprofit victim services, retail management, clinical administration, and now I'm very happy to be landing here in Parks and Rec and put all of that experience to great work.
Great, welcome. Vocal music or instrumental music?
Instrumental.
Very good, what do you play?
French horn is my primary orchestra.
Really? Oh, that's cool. Very good. Well, welcome aboard. Glad to have you here tonight, and now welcome aboard to the city of Bloomington.
Thank you so much.
In our Finance Department, we've got two new employees. Lori Economy Schuler, our CFO, is gonna welcome and say hello, introduce a couple of employees to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. With me tonight are these two lovely ladies. The first lady I'd like to introduce is Davina St. James. Davina is our newest cashier. She is a breath of fresh air greeting customers both on the phone and in person. Davina has multiple years of experience working for Hennepin County and Social Service Area. Her most recent experience was working for a residential property management company where she worked with residents. But Davina isn't here learning and helping in the Finance Department. She likes to volunteer and spend time with her two wonderful grandsons. Davina?
I do, I do.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Yes, like she said, I love my grandbabies. I was, I am a resident of Bloomington now. I was born and raised in Minneapolis, Minnesota. My passion is IT, but, excuse me, but I really love working with numbers, so I am in finance now. And I really enjoy it here. Everybody is very warm and welcoming, and it gives me a sense of inclusion here, so I am proud to be here.
Very good, well, welcome.
She's also a volunteer, so we will be getting her hooked up with loaves and fishes.
Oh, I love to volunteer, yes, yes. And I can't wait to see what you guys do with diversity here, too, because I was a project diversity member for Hennepin County and a chair, so I'm excited to see what you guys have to offer.
How old are the grandkids?
They are seven and nine.
Great.
Seven and nine.
Good, good for you. Welcome.
Next up is Lena Bajiba. And Lena was born in and grew up in Ethiopia. She is multilingual, and I think she mentioned seven languages. She grew up in a town where the majority of the population are multilingual. She grew up helping her father in his accounting business since she was 12. And on January 9th of this year, she started the Finance Department in the purchasing area as an accounting assistant, and one of her main functions we're transitioning to is she will be in charge of P cards. So you may be getting emails in regards to P cards and just information on that area. I mean, so, you know, just turning everything in on time. I mean, we have a thing, we need all, all employees to turn on time. She is a mother of two beautiful children, and one of them is with her this evening. In her free time, she loves to cook, outdoor activities, and volunteering in her community with the single parents and children with various needs.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for having me over today. As she, as Lori mentioned, I am from Ethiopia, and I'm happy to be with the city of Bloomington.
Well, thank you so very much for joining us this evening. Thanks for joining the city of Bloomington. And you have to introduce.
My daughter, Miriam.
Come on.
Hi, I'm Miriam.
Miriam?
I'm in ninth grade, and I go to Alphabai High School.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you.
Great you're here, supporting your mom tonight. Good job.
Thank you.
Welcome, good to see you. Thank you for being here. And finally, it looks like we have 1, 2, 3, 4 new members in our Community Development Department. Carla Henderson is gonna introduce them to us.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I know we usually do not introduce interns, but I wanted to take this time because we have, all our interns are special, but we are working with Citizens League, which is a nonpartisan think tank that was established in 1952. And in 2016, they started a program called Capital Pathways. And so they take BIPOC students who are attending two- and four-year colleges or universities in Minnesota and offer paid internships with government offices, nonprofits, corporations, and law firms to give them exposure to various kinds of career in public policymaking and public services. And so with that, I'd like to introduce our intern from Capital Pathways. This is Priscilla Maiowa. And so she started on January 3rd, and we thought, what better project for her to work on is actually helping us create an internship here in the city of Bloomington called Bloom in Bloomington, which you will hear more about at a later date. But it will be a program designed to provide internships to youth who face barriers to employment and an opportunity to build skills, learn leadership, and gain valuable work experience. Priscilla lives in St. Paul. She is currently studying creative practices and management and organizational management at Metro State University, and she enjoys solving problems and dreaming up solutions to issues. She also loves engaging with the community and does creative writing in her free time. So I'd like to introduce Priscilla.
Good evening, Priscilla.
Hi, everyone. Hi, hello, it's nice to meet you all, this is very scary.
You're doing great.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Carla mentioned you'd like to do creative writing in your free time. I didn't hear a whole lot of free time, given everything that's going on right now.
Yeah, so my free time is my work time, and my creative writing is my work, so it works out.
Well, great. Now, how long is the internship?
Still May.
Very good.
Yes.
Well, good. Glad to have you onboard. Thank you for being here with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna introduce Dan Bethke, who is a commercial property appraiser in our assessing team. He joined us November 21st, and prior to joining the team, he was a commercial appraiser at Dakota County for eight years. He also has 10 years of experience on the residential side of assessing at Scott County. Here in Bloomington, he will primarily focus on larger industrial buildings, most auto-related properties, fast food shopping centers, and smaller apartment buildings. Dan is married to Sheila, and they live in Lakeville with their three dogs. Dan and Sheila like to travel. They recently visited Memphis with friends. And they have three adult children. The sons are both teachers, and their daughter is a nurse at Mayo. And in his free time, he frequents group hubs and enjoys World Cup soccer.
All is true.
Welcome, Dan.
Welcome, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you. All right. And next, we're gonna introduce Naisha Lockwood, who is an Office Support Specialist in Environmental Health. She also joined us on January 3rd. She has extensive experience in customer service and resolving complex complaint casework from 13 years at Wells Fargo Home Mortgage. And she is the proud mother of three and has lived in Minnesota for 20 years, and we are super excited to have her join our environmental health team.
Thank you.
Good evening, Naisha, welcome.
Good evening, thanks for having me.
Very good, glad to have you here. What made you make the change from the private sector to the public sector?
Wanted to deal with more people.
Oh, you'll be dealing with people. Don't worry.
Welcome, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay. And last, but certainly not least, we have Michelle Lincoln, who is our newest planner, but also will be spending 20% of her time with the HRA, working on housing. And so she just joined us on January 9th, and she's our newest long-range planner. She's filling Mike Palermo's spot, who you know was promoted. Michelle grew up in California and Arizona. She has a bachelor's degree from Bucknell University with majors in anthropology and classics, and she has two master's degrees from the U of M, but not that U of M, University of Michigan. Sorry. One in urban planning and one in environmental justice. And prior to joining us, she worked at the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, so we're super excited to have Michelle join our team.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you so much for welcoming me to the city of Bloomington. I'm really excited to be here, very happy to continue working in the public sector and helping out, helping people.
I'm glad to have you, and interested to hear how it's gonna work, splitting the time between planning and the work with HRA. I think that's an important, kind of, bringing those two together is gonna be important, so I'm glad to hear that you're gonna be able to have one foot in each world there.
Me, too.
Good.
I like housing a lot, so this is perfect.
Good. Well, welcome. Thanks for being here this evening. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Andy, Davina, Lena, Naisha, Dan, Michelle, and Priscilla, welcome. So glad to have you here at the city of Bloomington, and I hope your tenure here is very successful, and you do a great job, so thank you. Can't wait for you to get out and meet the residents of Bloomington. So, thanks, thanks for being here. We're gonna do a quick mic check. Councilmember Carter, can you hear me, and can we hear you?
I can hear you now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, very good.
Awesome.
Very good.
Thanks for your patience.
Not at all, not at all. Because we have Councilmember Carter back, we're gonna double back on our agenda if we could, Council, to Item 2.1, which is the appointment of our City Council Member at Large. As you all know, and just so the residents watching know, we've had, I think, 18 or 19 applicants for this open position, the Council Member at Large seat that Councilmember Coulter served until he was elected to the state legislature. We had those 18 applicants, and we did initial interviews with each of them, and then called five back for second interviews, and they also submitted resumes, cover letters, so we've learned a lot about our pool of candidates, and I will say we've got an outstanding pool of candidates to choose from, both from the 18, and then certainly when we narrowed down to five, we've got some outstanding folks here who wish to fill this seat. I wanna thank everybody who did apply, thank you so very much, thank you for coming forward and putting yourself out there. I know it's not an easy thing, and I appreciate your willingness to do that. And so everybody who came forward and even did the initial interviews, and certainly who was willing to move on with the process as well, thank you so very much for your willingness to do that. We are appointing a council member for the first time in five years, four years, five years, six years, somewhere in there. I don't even recall. It has been a while since we've done it, and so we did make a point this time through with the number, despite the number of applicants, we really wanted to make a point of getting to know and see each one of them. And so that was the reason why we interviewed everybody and then doubled back and interviewed again, to really kind of get a feel for everybody that was coming forward and willing to do this kind of thing. Our voting, we are going to do the voting like we typically would do an appointment to our board or a board or a commission here in the city of Bloomington. Mr. Brillert was sharp enough to do a random number generator for us to come up with a random vote order that we're gonna be following tonight to do this. The way the City Council Charter, the way the City Charter is written, is we have three shots at this. We have three cracks to try and get to a majority, to get to four, and if we don't get to four on any of those three rounds, then it becomes an appointment of the mayor. And so just to let you know, that's where we stand with all of this. What the plan is, we'll go through and everybody will vote for one. If we get to four, we have a new council member. If we don't get to four, what we will do is eliminate all candidates who had either zero or one vote, and then vote a second time, and do that until we can, until we get to four or get through three times and not get to four. So, everybody clear on the process? Everybody clear on what we're doing tonight? Councilmember Carter, any questions from where you are? Nope, you're good. So as I said, Mr. Brillert came up with a random generator of who's gonna be voting, so we're gonna be going in this order. It's gonna be Councilmember Martin, Councilmember DeLisandro, Councilmember Nelson, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Loman, Councilmember Nelson. See, the LD and the DL got me, it caught me there, didn't it?
We get confused a lot.
Martin? Thank you. Martin, Loman, Nelson, DeLisandro, Carter, and me. Everybody clear on that? Councilmember Loman?
So, Mayor, you know, given the 0-1, you know, I like to speculate about things. So if each candidate had one vote, and then another had two, we'd eliminate the 0-1, so then we'd have just the candidate with two left over in this first round.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Very good. Mr. Brillert, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Martin?
I'll vote for Sa Mua.
Councilmember Loman?
Marine Skallen Feller.
Councilmember Nelson?
Marine Feller.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Sa Mua.
Councilmember Carter?
Sa Mua.
Mayor Bussi?
Sa Mua. So, Council, if my math is correct, Sa Mua received four votes, Marine Skallen Feller received two, none of the other candidates received any, and so we have a council candidate with four votes, and by my count, we have a council candidate. So, Council, I would look for a motion to appoint Sa Mua to the council seat with the, to fill the vacant council member at large seat.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to appoint Sa Mua to fill the vacant council member at large seat. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert?
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Mayor Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. So, just a reminder for everyone, now, Councilmember Appoint, new Councilmember Mua, he will serve until the end of this year. The seat will be up for reelection again this fall, when all seven council seats will be up for reelection. And the person, if it's Councilmember Mua or another person, whoever wins that election in November and then is sworn in on January 2nd, 2024, will then serve the remainder of Councilmember, that at-large seat, that Councilmember Coulter's seat, so an additional two years there. So congratulations to Councilmember Mua, and again, thank you to everybody who applied, and thank you for everybody's interest. And again, we had an outstanding group, and this was not an easy decision, but here we are, so off we go. All right, thank you. We will move on to Item 2.3 on our agenda, and we're gonna get an update to our Welcome to Bloomington Design Group. This has been a group that has been working for some time to try and put together a path to make Bloomington more welcoming to everyone, and appreciate the, first of all, the thought that has gone into this, and also the work that I know that has gone into this. I'm looking forward to the update here to learn more about it. We've got Padang Yang from our Equity and Inclusion staff, she's a program specialist, and also two members of the Design Group, Eric Pohn and Jesse Martinez. Welcome, and thank you. Looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. As mentioned, we're going to present about the Welcome to Bloomington Design Group, and how we came to this process, and also about the proposed Welcome to Bloomington program. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, let's do quick introductions, because, again, we do have our amazing two members from the Design Group here. So again, you all know who I am, but I wanna give them an opportunity to introduce themselves, so we'll start with Pastor Eric.
Hello, I'm Pastor Eric Pohn. I am the new lead pastor at Hillcrest United Methodist Church. I have been in the community since June, and it's just been exciting to be a part of this project.
Welcome.
Buenos noches, my name is Jesse Martinez. I am an Equity Specialist for Bloomington Public Schools. I am also on the Board for Oasis for Youth, which is our nonprofit supporting our youth, so thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you again so much, Pastor Eric and Jesse, for being here and for being a part of the Welcome to Bloomington Design Program throughout this whole time, so thank you so much. This next slide here, you'll see, we just wanted to do some acknowledgements and wanted to greatly acknowledge our facilitator partners through Community Outreach and Engagement Division. We had Laura Bohem, Nancy Brewster, and Amanda Cronby, who were supporting in the facilitation process, and I do apologize, I forgot to put Mike Sable up there, because Mike helped with one part of the breakout room facilitation, too, so thank you, Mike, for being a facilitator as well. And our Design Group members, you can see here, is also listed, so we want to acknowledge all their hard work and dedication and commitment to just helping us throughout the whole process of the activities and just programming and brainstorming and planning together. I just do want to make a note here that the asterisk do indicate members who are residents or community members that participated in the Design Group as well. Next slide, please. So just to give you a brief overview of the committee or Design Group members' composition breakdown, you can see that for gender, age, and Bloomington residents, it's highlighted here in the pie chart here. And we had a largely robust group of people who joined the Design Group, and we had a majority of females, 70% here, 25% male, and non-binary, 5% identify, that participated in the Design Group. And as for age, we also felt like it was really robust here as well, too. The youngest age we have was from 25 to 34, and then we even have someone at the age of 65-plus to also join us as well, so really robust group here to help design the program. And then for Bloomington residents, you can see here, we had 35% identify as Bloomington residents and 65% as non-resident. Next slide, please. To continue on with the composition breakdown, when we asked who identified as city employees and also community members, you can see here that we have 12 identify as community members and 13 identify as city of Bloomington employee. And earlier, when we had the list of all the individuals' names listed, we did have a robust group of all 10 departments of the city that were highlighted and a part of that Design Group as well, so that was greatly appreciated to have their expertise and the experience and breakouts and activities and discussions as well. And when asked if they were identified as renter or homeowners, you can see here that 18 identify as homeowners and seven identify as renters. And this next slide here is just a fun photo of our Welcome to Bloomington Design members in action, and so I just wanted to highlight some of these fun photos where they were doing a lot of great brainstorming, we had like a sticky wall, and they're able to put up the ideas and activities of what they were like and hope and dreams for our Welcome to Bloomington program. And with that, I'll pass it on to Pastor Eric.
Wonderful. May it please the Council, thank you for inviting us, councilmembers. My name is Pastor Eric Pohn, Senior Pastor at Hillcrest Church. The purpose of this initiative was to create a program of welcoming in the city of Bloomington. This program is unique in that in many cities, these would each be just their own initiative in and of themselves, and so it's very unique that we were able to bring together a comprehensive welcoming program for this particular city. It facilitates community connections across the city. It furthers the city's goal of having an inclusive and a welcoming community. Inclusive and welcoming means that other folks will invite, which with an invitational community increases the economy and increases the city. And this aligns with Bloomington together tomorrow, core value of creating a connected community. We have three primary goals. Next slide, please. First, that is to make Bloomington a city where people actually want to be versus just being a standard suburban bedroom community. The second is to provide support and resources to homeowners and renters. Many times, folks think of renters as just folks that are in apartment buildings, but many renters rent private homes, and they go unnoticed. They're there, they pay their rent, but they don't get the welcome that they deserve, and as a result, they're not as engaged in the city as they should be. Finally, the final goal is to address inequity across the Bloomington community, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jesse.
So for our Design Group, we started in the month of October, and it went on for about four months. We were meeting in person and virtual, which was great for everybody, the commitment that everybody demonstrated as well. If they weren't there, they were catching up. If they couldn't show up, they would let us know ahead of time, too, so everybody was just showing a tremendous amount of dedication.
Jesse, excuse me one second, can I ask you to pull the microphone just a little bit closer?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I'm short.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so for the topics that were covered in the month of October, we focused primarily on relationship building and within our Design Members, just getting to know each other. Again, it was a great variety of community members, staff from the city, different organizations. Again, it was a great variety of community members, staff from the city, different organizations were involved as well. And one of the biggest topics that we discussed was, what does it mean to feel welcomed? And everybody did an icebreaker activity. If you wanted to write about it, you could write about it. If you wanted to draw it, you could draw it. And then for the next, the next time that we met was in November, and that was to generate ideas and activities for a Welcome to Bloomington Program. That was our brainstorming night. It took a lot of conversation, a lot of getting to know each other as well. Councilmember Lowman was trying to steal my ideas all the time, but it's okay, I let it, I let it slide. In the month of December, we decided on four activities. Again, constructive conversation on what we were going to be focusing on, and it was very hard trying to decide on four topics to cover. But within the, the group, we discussed that the first one was going to be our bucket list, or a booklet of different community members going to different locations, and just getting to know Bloomington, the city of Bloomington, and what it has to offer. The second was the cultural fair. The third one was a city workshop or presentations for new residents. It's very hard navigating what it is to be a new homeowner, the laws and policies around the city of Bloomington. And then the fourth one was Welcome Neighborhood Committee, which will be community-led as well. And then in the month of January, we met to discuss the areas of budget, marketing, communications, and bucket list items. City workshops, presentations, and informational packets for new residents. So a very busy night as well. And then, we can go on to the next slide, please. So our outcomes were for, the first one was to identify the four activities for new residents to be engaged in. Then we created an estimated budget online, outline, sorry, for the cultural fair and Welcome Neighborhood Committee. And then the third one was to create a marketing and outreach communication plan about how to promote the Welcome to Bloomington Program to new residents.
And again, next slide. This is a full-year comprehensive program. So it's a program that is meant to touch many different aspects of our citizens' lives. So this will be a brief overview of our proposed Welcome to Design, Welcome to Bloomington Program. I'm going to go more in-depth on the next slides. But if you take a look at our opening slide, you'll see that the program begins in January of 2024. We'll have a one-time bucket list, which I'll go into a little more detail on. Of course, there'll be a cultural fair in the spring, summertime, new resident meetings, quarterly workshops, and then finally, a Welcome Neighborhood Community meeting. So let's go to the next slide. The bucket list is exactly what it is. It's a list to get new community members out into the community. When I first came here, I knew of two things in Bloomington: the Mall of America and the airport. I have since learned that there are many other features to this city, surprisingly. And it is helpful when you're a new neighbor to know where these things are. And so the, the bucket list allows you to do is you pick up a card on the closing or move-in day at City Hall, and it allows you to get around the city and get, to get in contact with attractions, and businesses, places of worship. And there'll be a completion incentive of a T-shirt once you complete the bucket list. Next slide, please. We're planning an annual Bloomington Cultural Fair. It's a one-time event that'll be held in either the spring or summer. Our city is a multicultural city, and this will bring together multicultural performances and live entertainment, foods and crafts, food trucks, and the key thing here, multi-generational engagement. So city ages, it is a great opportunity for youth to meet with older senior members of our community and to engage in dialogue. Next slide, please. We're going to be hosting new resident meetings organized by the city. They're going to be informal, informative, around the city, and open invitation. So it gives people a chance to answer their questions and get basic information about the city. Next slide, please. The city will be hosting quarterly city resource workshops, where it'll, again, organized by the city. There'll be information booths, access to programs, resources, and services. It'll be hosted at City Hall. So it'll give new residents a chance to come into this, frankly, outstandingly beautiful city hall, get to know the departments and the services. So at the first time they meet, meet someone, it will not be because their lawn is too long. Next slide, please. And then we will be hosting also quarterly Welcome Neighborhood Gatherings. Now, these are going to be organized by resident volunteers, so just neighbors, just like them. They'll be fun, they'll be informal, and they'll be neighborhood-specific. So if you've ever moved into a neighborhood, it's one thing to move into a new city. Each neighborhood has its own unique flair and character, and this will allow folks to develop a deep relationship with the community in which they live. So we have two questions for you as councilmembers. First question is, are there specific stakeholders that should be included in our planning for March 2023? Yeah, it's your turn.
Before we answer this question, can I ask the council if there are any questions of you before we get into this?
Absolutely.
Any questions? Because I had a question. The identification of new residents, is this solely on the new residents to realize this is a possibility and, and to, to be part of this? Or is there a way that we're able to reach out to new residents in the city in some way?
We have not gone that deep into the planning process. Soon as we have that information, we will let you know.
Okay, I can help a little bit. We, we have some on the back end of planning to utilize our utilities. As you may know, when new residents do come in, or new homeowners come in, we get lists, and we send a utility bill out. So that's one way of capturing that. Another goal we're planning to utilize is working with our property managers in the city of Bloomington, and also accessing a list of new renters as well, so that we can also do marketing, communication, outreach about the program. And in addition, hopefully word-of-mouth. And when we had the breakout session about marketing and communication outreach about the Welcome to Bloomington Program, there was also this massive list of other ways to market the program as well, such as our social media, and I think, again, the biggest piece folks were excited about was the word-of-mouth piece, too.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Council, any questions here? All right. We've exhausted our questions, so we'll answer your question. So question one, are there specific stakeholders that should be included in our planning for March of 2023? Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first off, I just want to say, as one of the councilmembers that got the chance to be a part of this, thank you so much for being here. The, the enthusiasm about the idea was palpable through all of the events. It was just really great, and I met a bunch of new people I didn't know before. So, you know, even in the process of creating a way to feel welcome, we were feeling welcome, I think, and I'd like to, so thank, thank you for that. Pedal did a great job of facilitating, and our community engagement folks were always helpful there. I would say that, you know, we did a lot of, we did a lot of brainstorming around things, especially when it came to like the bucket list and all, like, who should be on that? You know, what small businesses should we, you know, advertise, for lack of a better way to put it, and everything like that? It's one of those interesting questions, then, do we, should we be going back to them to say, do you want to be involved in this? Because, you know, we're making assumptions that Europolus wants to be on the list, but maybe they don't, and, you know, we, we need to check that. So I think one of the stakeholders to engage is just some of the folks we mentioned that we'd like to see be players in the, in the process, just to check, to make sure that they're comfortable with that. Thanks.
So I would say that the two specific stakeholders that maybe you've already considered, and correct me if, if you have, I, I think number one would be faith communities, because I think those are, those are built-in communities that, that I think in a lot of ways struggle in the same way that the city does to welcome new members in a lot of cases. And so to be able to identify new, new members of a, of a congregation with the help of those faith communities, to bring the faith community, the community itself together, but then also to bring those folks into the city of Bloomington, I think that would be helpful. The other stakeholders that, tell me, again, and I'm sure with the, with the school district representation here, there's got to be a way we can tap in with, with the schools in some way, shape, or form, whether it's the, you know, through, just through new registrants, obviously, but also through parent organizations, or sports teams, or something along those lines. There, there's got to be a way that we can, we can partner and align our work with the work of the, of the school district as well. And then I would think, don't be shy about being creative also. I mean, we heard from, I, I hope you've heard of the Todd Pod. Everybody else has. It's, they're famous here in Bloomington, and it's a great group that brings families with young toddlers together. And I know they're, they're always welcoming people, and, and that would be a good way, again, to connect with, with folks in different ways, whether they're, whether you use them as a resource to welcome in other families with toddlers, or to tap into that group and to see if they have new people coming in to make sure that they understand what, what your group is, is doing. That was shooting from the hip. Any other ideas or possibilities? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just think reaching out to the owners of some of the larger apartments, and being able to connect with them so that they might be able to help you identify new people that aren't owner-occupied and that sort of thing, so.
Councilmember, Martin, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will just put in a plug, I know they're in kind of planning mode right now for future years, but Heritage Days, especially with their parade, that's lots of major community organizations heading right down the middle of the street, so good crash course.
Councilmember Lowman, an idea?
Yeah, you know, since we got, we want to make this a place that everybody wants to be, how about future residents and folks who've left us? Maybe they find their way, I don't know how you do that, but, you know, we asked for it, and I figured I'd throw out a couple ideas of, of a constituency of folks that, since we want to pack Bloomington full of folks, why don't we get those folks who want to come here, those folks who may be left, and maybe they might find their way back.
All right. Enough good ideas for question number one?
I think so.
Thank you for that. Question number two, with what we have presented, are there additional ideas you have heard within the district that you serve that can, can be considered into creating a welcoming community?
Council? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you for the question. It may not be in the initial thing, but as we go forward, I would love to see it reach out to the businesses, new businesses that locate here, new employees that come work here. If there's a way to work with any of the employers, and just make sure people that, you know, maybe they don't live here, but they work here, they spend a lot of time here, they dine here, they shop here, all of those things. So if we can, we're, reach out to new businesses, particularly if they're putting a physical location here, and their employees, again, it's a big ask, but, and that may take some time, but it'd be great to have that on the list, too.
Councilmember Alessandro?
And I would, I would add to that, that I think we, you know, we know, we know as members of our, our own communities, when, when people move in, right? You can see the truck, or you can, in my case, Halloween was a great timing for one of the, one of the community members, they came around, like, this is my kid! And we were like, hello, kid, it was great to meet you, here, have some candy, you know? So that was really nice. And all, but, but when we, you know, we, we do have a really great National Night Out program, we always have more than 300 or so, you know, events and everything like that. So there are these folks within the community who have signed up to be, you know, members, members kind of stepping into a role of, of community leadership that may be a place to tap into for some more ideas. But I, I really like, you know, can we create ambassadors in, in our city services, like you mentioned, right? When, when they come here, what are, what are people hearing, you know, from our city services staff? If they are applying for a new builder's permit, for example, and, and it's because, you know, they're renovating a house they purchased three months ago, well, that's a great opportunity to offer a, a set of, of products like these to them, and that kind of thing if they haven't heard about it yet. So, you know, I think you have the, at least from my perspective, the ideas, but the, how you get to the next level of like, how to get creative with that is a good, a good idea. I notice you also have utility billing, right? So we know when new households are connected, or their garbage service is turned up, and other things like that, too. So there's ways to, to maybe initiate that through the utility billing process, little flyer or something in the, in the envelope.
Good suggestions, and I, and I was going to mention National Night Out as well, because it's the largest gathering in the city on a yearly basis, so it'd be a good, a good opportunity, a good resource to tap into. Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, Mayor. And this may or may not be my own idea. But two ideas that, that, that came, came about. One would be to see if there was a way for those folks who may be listening to this presentation tonight, you know, because I think some of the best things to do are for those ideas for those folks who, you know, could just kind of, you know, email in, or call in and say, hey, here, I've got an idea of how we could be more welcoming, just opening up to the entire community and saying, hey, what idea should you have? And then secondarily, I wonder, I know, we've got a number of things that, that, you know, we, we've got our core values and our new missions and those types of things. I wonder if we could, and maybe it doesn't have to be this year, but look to ways, and in some ways, it is already there, but, you know, for example, sustainability, we might find something with around sustainability that we could do an event, maybe it's not this year, Earth Day is coming pretty quick, so how we get that organized, but, you know, something around that, or something around some of the other core values that we have put together beyond diversity and inclusion. I think that'd be, be kind of fun to kind of roll that into this.
Council, anything else to add?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next steps?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and councilmembers. As you saw in the presentation, again, our next steps is going to be March 2023, we're going to dig down into deeper planning for each of the four activities in the larger annual Welcome to Bloomington Program. And we'll also be having an open invite for community members and residents to also be involved in that planning process, starting in March. And then, again, the hope is to launch the Welcome to Bloomington Program in January 2024. So those are our next steps. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much for your, your time this evening. Thanks for your service on the, the committee, appreciate it. Councilmember Alessandro?
As always, something comes to me afterwards.
Don't put too far, gang.
No, no, that's okay, just really quickly. Maybe as part of that planning exercise, an assessment of some other, other cities or neighbors, or neighborhoods, or other things like that, where Welcome to Programs have existed, even if you historically, if you're old enough like me that you knew that there was a welcome wagon at some point, right? There's, there might be some learnings there, too, and that's something to just maybe have as background research, so that was, sorry, I apologize.
Very good. Moving on to item three, which is our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Nelson has our consent business. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I have a hold for 3.9, and I did not, yeah, I did not hear for any other ones. All right. So with that being the case, I will move 3.1 through 3.8.
Second? Got a motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Martin, to approve tonight's consent agendas, item 3.1 through 3.8. No further council discussion on this, and I will point out, Councilmember Carter has dropped, so we can do a voice vote on this. So here, no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I believe, Councilmember Lowman, sorry, Mayor.
Nope, I, I was, that's where we're headed next.
Okay.
Item 3.9, Councilmember Lowman.
Not used to having my head where it is, so. So 3.9 is authorization to enter into 2022, 2023 collective bargaining agreement with Ask Me, Council Five Local, 2828 Assistant City Attorney. And, you know, Mayor, I think it was at the end of last year, or something to that effect, maybe it was November. I had made the request to, prior to approving this particular piece that we have, a follow-up discussion, because this particular group, as you may or may not recall, had, had raised some, some concerns. And I wanted to, to discuss this prior to having the opportunity to approve this particular contract. Now, understanding that, that, you know, this is something that has been put, put forward, and, and needs to be approved, I wanted to be sure that, that we were making good on, on this piece, and, and having all of our, our, all of our staff, you know, especially now with a number of staff leaving from this particular department, you know, I continue to have concerns. So, you know, while I am not, I'm not going to support this tonight, you know, given that I'm, it sounds like I, you know, with, with talking with the, the manager, the only person who is interested in having that dialogue or conversation, at this point, I, I'd like to not support this tonight. I, I'd like to, uh, not support this tonight. I, I think there's enough votes to, to kind of get this done, but, uh, it's not a, uh, you know, it's not from a legal perspective, but, uh, from a procedural, uh, perspective.
Understood, Councilmember Loman. Uh, I appreciate that. Uh, I will point out that, uh, this agreement was a result of arbitration. And so it was an opportunity for both sides to come to, you know, to present their, uh, to present what they wanted. And, uh, an arbitrator did make a decision on this. And, uh, what I would, uh, recommend, Councilmember Loman, and I think it's a good thing. We typically can go, we, we, I know we, we can go into closed session to discuss bargaining with, with employee groups. And we can do it, uh, there's nothing saying we can't do it on both ends, that, uh, at the beginning of a bargaining, uh, session and at the end of the bargaining session. So, uh, I might recommend as we, as we move forward in the future, if you're comfortable with this, if you think this would be a way to go, that we, we look at that possibility as we open up negotiations with a, a bargaining unit that perhaps the council meets, uh, in closed session at the start of that, that bargaining and, uh, as, as an agreement has been reached as well. Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, and, and certainly I'd be willing to have, have that, that conversation. Uh, but my understanding was that we were going to try to, and I understand that we have a lot of stuff going on here. I totally get it. Try to have it beforehand. So, um, you know, I, I, you know, if you want to set a date tonight to have that conversation, I could be, be persuaded, uh, to, uh, you know, shift my vote, uh, uh, with that added to here, um, or a date to be determined, you know, you know, by, by the end of, end of February, I could, uh, I, I'd be happy to, to, to move that. But, you know, I want to make sure there's enough councilmembers who would be interested in, in doing that.
Well, Councilmember, I don't know if I can do a date certain right now. Uh, I mean, this is for 2022, 2023. So this is, uh, a, a two-year contract right now. Not sure when the, the next, I suppose at the end of 2023 is when the, uh, the negotiations would begin again. And we could have that, you know, as we get closer to that time, when, when there is plans and staff would be able to inform us when the, uh, the negotiations would begin, that would be the opportunity, I think, to bring it up again.
Well, Mayor, I, pardon me, I want to make sure. You recognize me. Okay, I don't want to step out of, out of the decorum here. Um, I want to be sure that we have that conversation now while, while everything is fresh. Uh, I don't want to wait till, you know, a year and a half, uh, between now and then to, to have that conversation. So, um, uh, you know, certainly we could, we, we could pass this tonight. I'll, I'll vote no on that. And then immediately after that, we, you know, do a time certain sooner rather than later. And I think the, the urgency of now is, is the piece rather than letting it, it languish, uh, and not have that conversation. So that, that's, that's sort of the reason why I wanted to do this sooner rather than later.
Uh, and, and understood. And but, uh, and, and I'm sure, I know you understand, no matter how soon we do it, this is an, this is an arbitrated agreement. And so any discussion we would have would not necessarily affect the agreement that we'd approve this evening.
Yeah, and I don't, I think that's what I'm asking for. Yeah, I've, I've never asked for that. I'm not trying to effectuate or change the agreement tonight. It, it's solely, we hear, I, I've heard that staff have had concerns and I think that it is, uh, you know, you know, we're kind of the sounding board if there's an issue and that we ought to attend to that as soon as possible and not wait till the, to the, uh, you know, if there, if there's a concern or issue, we should address that sooner rather than later.
Understood.
Um, it's, it, it, it can't be a function of, because I don't think, you know, that's why we have, as you've, you know, and the mayor and the manager have appropriately stated to me either, you know, in private or not, uh, you know, that's the role of the arbiter. But I do think that there is, you know, there's some stuff going on there and, and I think it makes some sense for us to have that conversation. So I'd rather us do it sooner rather than later.
Appreciate it.
Um, and the fact that, you know, we didn't do that, now we're passing this, even though I specifically asked for that beforehand. And I seem to think that I had agreement with that, but we didn't. I want to make sure that we understand what I'm asking for.
Got it. Mr. Verugui?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, I do, uh, understand Councilmember Loman's request. We will, uh, ideally begin negotiating for 2024, um, contract, uh, mid-year. Uh, I, I think it's always good to try and get going as early as possible. Uh, normally what we would do is come to the council a little bit before we start that. And so April or May is what we have identified is the time to do that, is to touch base with council before we, uh, begin the process of negotiating with the unions. So if that's acceptable, uh, that's the schedule that we'll build around, is plan on a closed session for labor relations, uh, in April or May to have the conversation.
Is that sooner enough for you, Councilmember Loman?
We've got a lot of stuff on our plate. So, uh, yeah, if, if we're, we're making that commitment that, uh, we'd have a closed session, April or May, and I don't necessarily need to have it written down, I mean, uh, or with that, and there's, isn't anybody opposed to that? You know, I, I'm happy to, uh, uh, support that piece of it. Um, and I think I'll just abstain from this piece of it. So I, I get it. So, thanks.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions regarding item 3.9? If not, uh, Councilmember Loman held it, but I'm assuming Councilmember Loman's not going to move this for us. Councilmember Nelson, if you would, please?
Yeah, I'll move item 3.9.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Alessandro to approve item 3.9 on tonight's consent agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstain? Item passes four zero with one abstention. Councilmember Loman abstaining. Very good. Moving on to item four, our hearings, resolutions and ordinances. We've got a couple of opportunities this evening for the public to bring forward concerns, comments and opinions. Item 4.1, we'll be talking about the Bloomington sales tax resolution, and this is a public comment opportunity. Mr. Verugui has, uh, stretched his legs and moved down in front of us again to, uh, give us a presentation on, uh, what we're going to be talking about and discussing here. And then we will open up the public comment opportunity after, uh, we've had the presentation and an opportunity for council to discuss this a bit. Uh, Mr. Verugui?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmember. Saw the chiropractor this afternoon. He told me some stretching is good, so I'm happy to do this. So this evening, we do have a public comment opportunity, uh, talking about Bloomington's sales tax. Uh, and it's not a formal public hearing, but the council, uh, did indicate that they wanted to make sure that the voice of the community is, uh, reflected, uh, before, uh, passing a resolution and taking this to the legislature. So let me, um, let me real quickly, uh, talk about the why again. There's, there's more in the presentation. This is the same presentation I did, uh, two weeks ago, but I realized that not everybody may have been tuned in, uh, because they may be paying more attention with the public comment notification. Um, why we are, uh, requesting authority from the legislature to do a local option sales tax. And then if, uh, granted that authority by the legislator, asking the community, uh, to vote in referendum to approve that local option sales tax, uh, goes back a number of years. As we have done our capital planning, uh, going back to 2015, 2016, we first started having this conversation recognizing that, uh, our community had significant, uh, capital investment needs and that, uh, uh, doing all of those projects, uh, and utilizing property taxpayer, uh, funds to do that was going to really challenge our community, uh, in maintaining, uh, a reasonable, uh, tax levy. And so the council, uh, several years ago, uh, directed us to start, uh, researching whether a local option sales tax was a viable alternative for us and to identify projects that would be, uh, eligible based on the criteria that the legislature has set. There have been numerous communities just within the last five years, uh, that have received the authority. Uh, there are over 80, I believe, that are currently approved in the state of Minnesota, uh, including the core cities and more recently Edina and Maple Grove, uh, and Oakdale, uh, that have been granted approval. And so what we're doing is putting forward, uh, an opportunity for the council and the community to identify projects that are important for the community, uh, that would be funded by, uh, a sales tax, uh, of people coming to Bloomington. And so spreading out the, uh, responsibility for, um, paying the taxes that would support that project. So let's jump into the slide real quickly. Uh, so last year, we were at the legislature. The council, uh, passed a resolution in January to put forward four projects for council, for legislative consideration. Uh, the Bloomington Ice Garden, uh, renovation, the Community Health and Wellness Center, which is a replacement for Creekside and Public Health, uh, Bloomington Center for the Arts Concert Hall Expansion, and then improvements at Dwan Golf Course. Uh, we made good progress in both the House and the Senate. However, the legislature deadlocked last year and did not move any of the local option sales tax, uh, bills forward. Uh, we also got some, uh, good feedback from legislators in the course of, uh, presenting these projects. And so, uh, we come back to you with a different list than we had last year. Next slide, please. So again, as I mentioned, uh, over 80 units of, uh, government have received this authority. And I highlighted the three that are on the list there. Uh, Edina, uh, and Maple Grove both approved theirs in referendum just this past November. Slide. So as a funding source for our capital projects, as I mentioned, we have a number of facilities that have significant, um, uh, reinvestment or replacement needs, largely based on, uh, the age of the facility, the condition of the facility, or simply, uh, the functionality in, uh, meeting the needs of the community today as opposed to when these facilities were first constructed. Uh, we have analyzed, uh, information from the University of Minnesota Extension Service, uh, that, um, identifies the amount of sales tax revenue that is generated in the city of Bloomington. And the amount of sales tax revenue generated is in the neighborhood of $12 million annually. And we have, uh, worked with our, uh, municipal, uh, financial consultant, uh, to determine how much that would support, uh, in project, uh, total project cost. Uh, and again, because this is sales tax, uh, it relieves the burden of local property taxpayers because the sales tax is paid for by a much broader audience. And in other words, a lot of people from outside of Bloomington pay for, um, uh, services and products in Bloomington. And so the impact of the tax is spread. Uh, so rather than have a property tax, uh, fund, um, that is 100% supported by Bloomington, uh, people, the, the sales tax would be about a 75-25 split. In other words, 75% of the sales tax revenue would be generated from people from outside of Bloomington. And only about 25% uh, is expected to be, uh, from Bloomington taxpayers. Next slide, please. Uh, what we're asking for is a, uh, half percent, uh, added to retail sales in the city. And so it is only currently taxable products, uh, so things that are not taxed, uh, would remain untaxed. So items like food and clothing and other essentials that currently do not, uh, pay sales tax in the state of Minnesota would continue to be, uh, exempted from sales tax. As I mentioned, 75% of that would be generated by people outside of Bloomington per the University of Minnesota Extension Service analysis. Uh, and therefore it reduces the impact on Bloomington residents. Uh, so it's a win-win in that we get some of these, uh, projects, uh, which are regional in, uh, nature, uh, supported by people who, um, are from the region. And like I said before, this would require approval of Bloomington voters at a subsequent referendum. Next slide, please. Uh, I think I've covered this one, uh, pretty well, so we'll skip through that and then go to the proposed projects. So this year, uh, we have identified three projects. Uh, the first is, uh, continuing the request for the Bloomington Ice Garden renovation. Uh, this is a facility that, um, has some structural and mechanical, uh, issues. We have a roof replacement, uh, that is imminent. The type of refrigerant is, uh, increasingly unavailable. And so as it continues to dwindle in supply, the cost is going to increase, uh, to utilize that refrigeration. Um, we have ADA improvements that need to be made. We have modifications to the actual rinks. One of the rinks is an Olympic size, which has fallen out of fashion. It is, uh, less useful, um, than other rink sizes. So we're trying to appropriately size our, um, ice rinks for what the need is. Would add some, uh, locker rooms and certainly enhance the guest experience. Uh, this project is estimated to be, uh, $35 million, uh, and then looking forward a couple of years before we'd actually get under construction, uh, considering that there will probably, uh, perhaps be a couple of million dollars of additional, uh, cost based on where, uh, labor and supplies are, uh, in the construction market today. Next slide. Community Health and Wellness Center, as I indicated earlier, is a replacement for the Creekside, uh, Community Center and the Public Health Building, both of which are 1960s vintage, vintage structures. Um, Creekside is long been the home of our senior community, uh, and it is, uh, if, if, it doesn't serve as a community center for the whole community. And, uh, what the council has been investigating for a number of years, going back, uh, to 2014, I believe, when the first study was initiated to look at what a new community center might look like that could serve, uh, a broader segment of the community. Uh, and then public health is being, um, delivered out of a building, uh, that has become functionally obsolete. It is too small to, um, uh, to house the number of staff that we have working in public health. Uh, it is too small for delivering the client services that we need to deliver. And we also have a significant equity issue in that the, um, the facility that we are serving public health from is very different than the, um, other facilities such as Civic Plaza that, um, people in our community have the benefit of enjoying. And considering that, uh, our public health clientele, uh, is often in underrepresented communities, uh, we want to make sure that we are meeting our own expectations and standards for, uh, how we deliver equitable services. The Community Health and Wellness Center, let me go back real quickly, Mike. Uh, last year, the request was $75 million. Um, this year, we are starting at about $100 million. Uh, this is again a recognition of the labor and materials cost increases and inflation. Uh, it was based on the medium-sized Creekside Community Center option that was looked at back in 2019. Um, we would like the council to maybe consider, uh, a little bit more than the 100 million as well, just to provide us flexibility both from a, uh, an inflationary perspective, but also a, um, service delivery perspective and, and the, the type of facility that we could potentially construct. And finally, the third project is a natural resource project. Uh, council had, uh, expressed, uh, interest in having a natural resource project to review as part of our submittal. And so what staff has put together, uh, would combine some planned improvements already, uh, for the Moyer and Central Park areas, uh, and other improvements that were identified in our park system master plan, uh, with work to, uh, enhance natural areas along the Nine Mile Creek area. Uh, this is a total project cost of about $20 million. Uh, this would include some projects that are currently planned in our CIP in 2025 for the Moyer and Central Park area. And so if the natural resource, um, project was not included in what was requested to the legislature, uh, I just want the council and the community to know that, uh, that there is significant, um, park reinvestment and natural resource work that is still planned in the CIP to move forward, whether it's included, uh, in this ask or not. So those are the three projects we're looking at. Um, and we have put two resolutions in front of the council. Uh, as we discussed two weeks ago, the, um, uh, the process, like I said, is to have the legislature, um, grant the authority for the city to put the question on the ballot. And, uh, we are targeting about $155 million of total project costs because that's what can be supported by the, uh, by the sales tax revenue that's being generated. And so the question for the council is whether you want to put forward two projects, which would be the, um, Bloomington Ice Garden renovation and the, uh, Community Health and Wellness Center, or if you want to put forward three projects, uh, which would then include the Nine Mile Creek Corridor renewal, uh, in, in the three project, um, option. Uh, the amount of funds that would be available for the first two projects, the, the big renovation and the health, uh, uh, center, um, would be reduced. And as I indicated, then I have a little bit of concern about doing that just because of where we stand today on inflationary costs and also knowing that those two projects have been in our CIP, uh, for a number of years and are, um, uh, reaching the point where we really need to make decisions on them. And so, uh, um, if, if you ask me where I stand today, I would recommend that the two-project approach would be the better approach, um, but it is certainly up to council how you want to proceed. So unless there are any other questions, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, I will happily yield and then, uh, you can have the public comment session.
Council questions? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, you, you mentioned the CIP, um, and I, and I think sometimes there's a little bit of confusion. So I want to just be sure that we, uh, really clarify what that means when we put something in the CIP. That does not mean that those dollars are put aside, uh, that they're absolutely going to, it's going to happen. It's just, it, it's a plan, uh, and, uh, it's possible through other resources. It's just it's a plan, and it's possible through other resources, and you can, maybe you might be able to state that a little better than I.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Loman, I appreciate that point. The CIP, for those who are watching and are not familiar with the with the language, is our capital improvement plan. So we have a document that looks at the the physical infrastructure of the city and plans for necessary improvements to the infrastructure and assets of the city. It is a plan. It is not a commitment. So when I say, for example, that projects are in the 2025 year for CIP, and we do go through the process of identifying the sources of funds to support those projects, it's it's not saying that the council has committed those funds to do it because each year, the council has to approve the projects that ultimately are done. You approve the CIP as a planning document. So we're able to forecast when projects will be done. We schedule out our sources of funds to try and find a consistent and stable level of funding. But to say something is in the 2025 plan is not to say that it is already approved for construction. Thank you.
Thank you, and I've got a few other questions, so I'll try to try to be quick here. So, you know, and I'm not going to put you on the spot here, but if we were to build a a brand-new public health building, you know, in today's environment, how much might something like that cost?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Loman, we have estimated that to be in the low $20 million range as just a standalone building, and we currently have a request for bonding dollars from the state to support that. And so what we're doing is kind of running a dual-track process here where, in the event that the local sales tax option is not available to us, that potentially we will have state bonding dollars. The so so hopefully, we would still have a partner in the state that would pay for about half of that project cost. The downside is then the other half still falls on the Bloomington taxpayer as opposed to trying to minimize even more of the cost to the Bloomington taxpayer, but it's in the low $20 million stance, your question.
And then from, I know, and this is some time back, but just for the for those folks, the medium-sized community center was roughly 75, and the larger one was roughly, I think it was 150, or I can't remember what the exact number was off the top of my head.
I want to say it was about 115, but I haven't looked at the old number recently.
It's been a while. And certainly, there's economies of scale when you put, you know, put both the the health piece in with that piece. So let me let me ask these last two questions here. What is the risk that the city would, you know, let's say we we put all three on the on the ballot, what do we what do we face as taxpayers and as a council if we put all three of those on there and there and there's cost overruns with all three of the projects?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, it's a good question. So if it's on the ballot and the voters approve, and we get to the point of then moving forward on the on the design and planning of the facilities and then get to the cost part of it, it will depend on the phasing of those projects, but we will have to operate within the budget that we've identified to construct those. If there are additional costs, it would be up to the council and the staff to identify other sources of funds to cover those costs. And so that could be charter bonds, it could be other forms of property tax support, or even outside funding sources as well. But we're going to work really hard to keep our projects within the amount that is requested of the community.
And so with that being said, if there was overruns and we didn't put all three of them on there, we we could dip into those other dollars if there was available funds?
You can, yes.
Okay. And then finally, let's say if we were to leave one of the projects off and and we weren't able to use up all those funds, could we could we bring one back?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, once the legislature has granted the authority, any change to that legislative action would have to go back to the legislature again. So any modification to our plan would have to get new legislative approval. Then subsequently, new voter approval.
But let's say we put the two together today, we could come back at a later time if those dollars weren't spent and put a third proposal.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Loman, the answer is yes. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just follow up to councilmember Loman's question. Would the, if we added back a project later, would that go back to the voters for approval?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, you would not be able to add a project unless the legislature authorized you to do that, and then you would have to put that on the ballot for voter approval.
Okay. So no matter what, the voters would get to approve.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Can you explain to me, because last year when we looked at this item, the community center, the Health and Wellness Center, whatever we want to call it, was 70 million, and now you're looking at 110 million, which is a bit over 50% increase. Yeah, can you help?
Sure.
Me and the community understand that increase?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, it's a function of two things. One is just the inflationary cost of construction, which in our most recent assessment from the firm that we do some of this estimating with, I think was up in the neighborhood of 25%, okay? And the remainder is thinking about the the scope of the project and frankly, the amenities that would be provided inside that design. And so it's actually trying to provide a number that gives us flexibility in what that design looks like because we know there are going to be conversations about whether to include aquatics or not include aquatics, or include a parking ramp or not include a parking ramp because obviously the more surface parking we have is going to limit the the building size options. So it gives us some planning design alternatives that we probably weren't thinking about a couple of years ago when we first proposed that number. The other thing that we're trying to be cautious of here is just frankly, the impact of interest rates for bonding on these projects. It is a huge wild card right now. The 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 ability to, so the project cost right now is being constrained a little bit by some of the pressure from interest rates, and so until we know how that's going to play out, we need a little flexibility there as well.
And if I could just add on, Mr. Verugui wasn't there a bit of a reality check also in terms of what some of the other costs from other communities coming in were in terms of what we were thinking about as well?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that's that is true, that similar projects have been moved forward by other communities and seeing what those construction costs are caused us to go back to the drawing, well, not to the drawing, but but go back to the calculator a little bit and make sure that our assumptions on the per-square footage was were the right assumptions for the project.
So are there any concerns? Because I I note that big went from 32 to 35, so less than 10%. So given the same story, there obviously isn't as much construction per se within that, and so is that the reason that that didn't go up quite as much in staff's estimation?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I don't have, I don't have the specifics on what was driving the percentage increase in the inflationary expenses. I think you're probably right in that the for a new build, there's just a, there's a lot more products that are subject to the inflationary effect than there is with, I think, the big improvement because we're looking at some of the mechanical, it is not intensive as some of the other construction.
Mayor, last question I have right now. Some of the feedback that I've gotten is people don't fully understand the community center, even though we've discussed it for a few years. And you indicated those the medium size that we looked at, but can you give a sense of what does that include on the interior? What does that include in outdoor spaces? Because I would note that, you know, Nine Mile had a very specific, this is how much trail, it's going to be wide, and it's going to have bikes, this is how many acres is going to be restored. Big talked about the refrigeration and the roof, and I mean, very detailed, and the community center was kind of like, yeah, it's going to be public health, and it's going to be, it's going to be great. You know, I mean, and that's, I think, some people are just like, what is it?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, the the types of uses that would be programmed within the community center would include fitness, it would include community gathering space and in numerous meeting rooms, it would probably have some sort of banquet facility in it, which is something that we just don't have available in the city right now. It would include aquatics, indoor aquatics. We obviously have a wonderful family aquatic center in the summertime. We don't have an all-season aquatic, and those are the, those are the primary things that would be in the community center. We did not do much in the way of what do the grounds look like planning. We were very focused just sort of on a building program and a square faded, square footage for the various types of uses, and so we didn't get to that point, at least for the Creekside location, of being more explicit about the the types of amenities other than the square footage programming for the most part. We did a little bit more work when we were looking at Valley View, but now that we're committed to the Creekside site, which I want to remind everybody, the council has said we're focused on the Creekside site, and that's what we're talking about, we would need to resuscitate all of that work in terms of the building program and what's going to be included. And frankly, some of those desires may have changed over the course of, you know, four or five years since last we had this conversation.
So regarding the Nine Mile Creek proposal, knowing that for local option sales tax projects, they they need to have a regional impact, do we do, are we confident, or how confident are we that this Nine Mile Creek corridor renewal meets that that test of being a regional project?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we put it forward because we're confident that that meets the regional criteria. I won't tell you that I'm overly confident because we haven't introduced this concept to the legislators, so we haven't had any feedback in terms of how they would receive this project. So we did focus on Nine Mile Creek because it obviously does move through multiple communities. That corridor is a very heavily utilized corridor for walkers and bikers and others who enjoy passive and active outdoor recreation, but until we hear from legislators, it's really hard to say.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions here? I see none, so thank you, Mr. Verugui. As I indicated earlier, we have, we did talk about making sure that we had a public comment opportunity on this item, and so while not a formal and official public hearing because those are not required for this, we wanted to make sure that we did do a public comment time, an opportunity for people to come forward or to call in and express their thoughts on the Bloomington sales tax resolution and proposal. So right now, I will open up item 4.1, the public comment opportunity. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to come forward and speak on the public comment opportunity for the Bloomington sales tax resolution? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.1?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there is no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity for item 4.1. Council thoughts on this? So we've got two possibilities in front of us, the the two or the three projects, and I think it breaks down to the, the three projects are a bit broader. It spreads the the overall sum of the revenue from the Bloomington sales tax, spreads it a little bit more thinly, and but it it provides the natural resource restoration and that park kind of piece that we had talked about, hoping to include in this. To do it as two projects, it gives us a little bit of a cushion and a little bit of more understanding that the, or confidence that the money raised through this is going to cover the projects that we have put forward. I mean, we're at least, given the the timing of this, we're, you know, months out, years out from actually being in the ground and this kind of thing, and we all have seen over the past months and years recently how the the costs of everything has gone up, in particular, the with the inflation and around labor and around building materials is just kind of, it's gone through the roof, and we've actually heard of projects here in the city that have been temporarily postponed because of the cost of those things as well. So I look to you, council, discussion thoughts on on what direction you'd be most comfortable moving forward as we as we, if we do decide to take this forward? Let's answer that question first. Would it be the two projects or the three projects? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd first say that the two projects, in my mind, that I most want to move forward are big and the Nine Mile Creek one. I'm actually, everything we've seen from the community with regards to natural resources and trails is at the top of their list, and to be able to make that connection and to widen those pathways to allow for more people to be able to use them in Nine Mile Creek, I I think that one, in my mind, makes absolute sense. Big, the refrigeration, it's just not going to be available. I mean, these are not, frankly, in my mind, some of these expenses are not discretionary, and that is such a clearly regional use, in my mind, that that one makes sense. The community center is the one that I struggle more with. I remember that the the task force from many, almost a decade ago, maybe?
2015, 2016?
Yeah, okay, so not even a decade, so pretty recently. You know, they talked so much, like five of, three of the five things that they said was to have indoor and outdoor programming, and that's the part that I'm not seeing. I'll be candid, I don't recall when we decided to specifically focus on Creekside. I know we decided not to do Valley View, and but that one, I I still struggle to get my head around what it is, what are the needs there? I I still don't know that we need to replicate things that the private marketplace can provide, like workout facilities and things like that. I think we should be focused on things that they can't provide, like senior facilities, the meeting rooms, the recreation, the, some of the aquatic stuff, I think, absolutely makes sense. You know, we we see that there are aquatics that isn't being provided within the community that people would like to have, and so that that one's more, that's the one that's more of a struggle for me. The the big and the Nine Mile Creek, I'm totally on board for those, so.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just overall, I I agree that going with a fewer number of projects, I think, makes more sense. I'm comfortable with option B. As as councilmember Nelson just stated, the Ice Garden is kind of a no-brainer that has to get replaced at some point in terms of the mechanical aspects. In terms of the Community Health and Wellness Center, just my recollection is that Creekside was one of the original sites that were under consideration, and Valley View was introduced later on in that process, considering the many positive attributes it brought to the table. I think while that higher cost obviously is a little tough to swallow, I think, again, going back to the public, maybe picking up to an extent where we left off, we were getting to the point where we were looking even at building massing drawings on the Creekside site to figure out where that that might go forward. So it's not like we're starting from scratch, but also re-engaging the community and doing it with enough of a buffer where the ideas that they're bringing forward could still be possibilities, as opposed to us going for the lowest possible number and really not allowing that community voice to shape the outcome because it's so bare bones. So overall, I I would lean pretty strongly towards moving forward with option B. I would also say that makes our work a little bit tougher. I understand that the Nine Mile Creek work is included in our CIP, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be simple to resource when that column in the CIP finally comes to meet us. So I'd move forward with B.
Thank you, councilmember Martin. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I'm in Camp A right now, just so you know, and here's the reasons for that. I can be persuaded, of course, but reasons for being in A. Number one, we're asking for authorization at the legislature, and then the voters are going to have to choose, and they have to vote on each of them. So even if, has no guarantee that we will be authorized by our community to do them. However, if we were authorized by our community to do them, it would be a strong, it would be a strong indicator that these are things that people want. And I think, and I think each of them is a good contender for that because of the information we have about our community sentiment. The reason, the second reason I am for Camp A right now is, or option A right now, is because kind of to to councilmember Nelson's point, I I think we should, to some degree, constrain the the community center, public health piece so that we do have to be more... have to be more concerted in our efforts to truly prioritize that which is a unique opportunity for the city to serve the residents. So by, by naturally constraining the project, you require the prioritization, which gives people a chance to really say, I want the aquatics and I'm okay not having the gym, or I want the meeting spaces and I'm okay not having the aquatics, or, you know, I, I, I want something tall with an elevator and I'm okay if we don't put a lot of parking there because people will walk, drive, bike, you know, all kinds of things. I don't know, right? But you force the conversation when you constrain the project in that regard. And it doesn't preclude us from doing other things. I also, and I just, I will say this, like, I just am still not convinced personally that that 75-25 split is accurate. And I, all I, the only reason I say that is because all of the numbers we have are from pre-pandemic. The numbers that we did have during the pandemic actually show more of a two-thirds split. And I personally, just, just loan as hot take, right, think that that will be sustained. I think we will see more two-thirds than three-quarters. That's my opinion. And so by the time we get to the vote, should we get the authorization, we will, we will be asking the Bloomington residents for something more, in which case naturally constraining the community center plus providing the two things we believe are the highest of, of, I think our survey even said, those were one and two. Well, we didn't have it for number, we didn't have it for the natural resources one, but we have a survey that says natural resources is very important. We also have a survey that said, if we're gonna do something, please do the big. And so I think, you know, you would, even if it was two-thirds instead of three-quarters split, I still think you'd have very strong support for those two initiatives anyway. So based on all of that, I'm in the, I'm in option, I'm in Option A land at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. So we've got Option A, Option B, and Option something else.
I call it Option D.
Councilmember Lohman?
Option D, here we go. So I think the ice garden piece, I, I'm definitely on board with that. We, we, we got an environmental, you know, reasons to do that. And, you know, there's legal reasons where, where we can't, we gotta do that. So that, that's a, I think that's a no-brainer. Before I say the next piece, I want to let just the staff know how much I appreciate, you know, th- these two proposals that they put forward in terms of really trying to be fiscally responsible and, you know, looking to see that there are, you know, that they're warning us that there could be issues out there if there's cost overruns with both. So with that being said, you know, I, you know, am a strong supporter of making sure that we look at both, you know, the areas of my area in terms of Nine Mile Creek and Moyer Park. I, I, I just think, you know, we've, we've, we've seen the surveys out there in terms of where that's at. And I know, and I will concede that, you know, this is a late arrival. This is not as mature of a policy. And I can understand why, you know, this council, you know, in terms of being fiscally prudent, may want to say, you know what, let's put the two ones forward, both being big and with the wellness piece, and then come back and bring, you know, ask some of those questions that the managers asked in terms of going to the legislature and saying, hey, you know, what do you think if we were to bring this forward? And then we see what those cost overruns, and then we have that opportunity to have that conversation around what this new health and wellness piece looks like. So with that being said, though, I'm certainly, you know, I, I can understand why we as a body may decide, you know, to, to push that back because of those reasons. But with that being said, since it's in my district, I want to see it done. And, and I think that, you know, I've heard, you know, you know, week after week, month after month over years, that, you know, we'd like to get some things done there in Moyer Park. We've got the, the staircases and all those types of items. And I, I just get concerned about the, though, we've got a number of fire stations that are coming up, that there's going to be other priorities that are going to come before that, that Moyer Park piece. And I'm just concerned that we're gonna want to do those as opposed to that. So that's why I don't want to take the risk of taking this off the table tonight. But I can understand why, why we may want to do that. With that being said, I, I, I want to encourage us to, as we look at this health and wellness piece and, and really hear what the manager said, because this does serve a group or a population within our, within the city that has typically, you know, you know, not gotten the, the top piece. You know, when you go over there, I'll, I'll never forget this, Mayor, going over there to the public health and having a centipede run over my, my, my foot. And I just, you know, just the way that building looks, I mean, it reminds me of the DMV, what that looks like. So I just think that we really need to prioritize that health and wellness. So understanding what staff has, has kind of put forward, I, I still would like the, would like the three, but I would be open to the idea of if we were, if we felt like we were, this, this project was not fully mature yet, and we didn't have the chance to have that dialogue with the legislature of, you know, bringing it back at, you know, maybe a year later, once we had to have that conversation, if that makes sense, and put the, both the ice garden and the, the wellness and health piece, in the community center piece as a part of it forward.
Thank you, councilmember. So you're, you're at A, is what I, did I hear you say you were at A? Is that what I heard?
I'm at D, because D delays it, delays, delays part of it.
Well, I know that the resolution is due from the council. If we want to move forward with this, there's a resolution due by the 30th?
Mr. Mayor, the date for the resolution is the 31st of this month.
31st of this month.
And we don't have a meeting next Monday, so we have to make a decision tonight if we're gonna move forward.
And so just to be clear, Mayor, what I'm saying is, is that we put the ice garden in the wellness, you know, by the, by the deadline. And we would, you know, take the, you know, the, you know, the option three with the Nine Mile and, and float that over at the legislature, see, you know, what the interest is with that, and, and do the due diligence that needs to be done, and then bring it back in a subsequent year, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so you're saying Option B with, leaving that, the Nine Mile possibility for the future, for future years?
Well, I'd want to have a time certain on that.
Yeah, okay. All right. A couple of things, my, my thoughts on this. First of all, councilmember, we heard from the Extension Service about that, that breakdown in, during, during the pandemic. And they did put it at the two-thirds, one-third, the 66% is what they thought. But I think they did include in their analysis that if the economy bounced back, that they, they would expect, they expected that number to go back up to 75%. And I think, given how things are, are going at the Mall of America and with our hospitality and industry and so on, I think it is safer to say that, I, I don't know if it's going to be right at that 75%, but I bet it's going to be closer to the 75% than the 66%, just based on the analysis that we got from the Extension Service and the caveat that they put into the analysis that they did. So that's just, just one thing to think about. In terms of the, the A or B with the projects, it, it's a, this is a dicey one for a couple of reasons. And I think, again, another reality check, I, I think it's, it's entirely possible that this whole notion of local option sales tax is not going to be well-received over in St. Paul. And so we may be, this may be an empty effort for the work that we're putting in, because it, this may not be received at all in terms of what the tax chair is willing to move forward. And so that's a real possibility here. So then we would have to go, literally go right back to the drawing board, and it would be, we'd have to hope for the, the bonding bill, and we would have to hope for, you know, we'd have to expect to somehow deal with, if we needed these things, if we wanted these things, then we'd end up paying for them ourselves. So that's, that's one bit of cold water reality thrown on all of this. With that in mind, my thought is to make this as simple as possible for, for what we have moving forward. So I do think to go with Option B, to move forward with two projects, to give the legislature a very clear look at what we're doing, to be able to state very clearly that these are indeed regional projects, they have regional significance, and to, to try and move those forward as much as we can. So that, that's where I am in terms of just trying to make this all happen and, and make this all work. I think we've been talking about these two for a long time, and these are really at the top of our capital needs lists. I mean, as everybody has said, the ice garden is a no-brainer because without investment in the ice garden, there's no ice garden anymore, because we won't have the refrigerant anymore. And to be able to, to be able to move our, our public health and, and Creekside into more suitable facilities, I think is, is something we just need to do. Do agree with you, councilmember DeLisandro, you limit the cost and, and you, then you have the discussions about what the programming is. And it's amazing how that discussion gets focused very quickly when there's, there's only so much money to go around. So I, I agree with that. But that, that's my opinion. I think we go with B. And so that's where I am on this, this conversation. Councilmember Lohman?
Well, Mayor, I, I just kind of, if my math is right, you know, I think we've got a number of folks who, if we did do B, might not have the same two projects in mind for that. So I'm trying to figure out what would be a good way. Does it make sense to take a vote on whether or not we do two projects, that pick which ones they are, or just go with the two that are already there, given what, what you said? I mean, and I'd be amenable to that if, you know, that, that, those two projects, if there's that chance of bringing back. I think you have to look at those cost overruns. I know you're going to have cost overruns with the wellness and health piece, you know, that, that's, and when we, when we did the last time, we went to that community center, there was definitely overruns with that. So I don't know, Mayor, you know, I'd be happy to put a motion together and, you know, okay, maybe I could, I could concede a little bit on the, on the date certain, because you got to see when. But I'd like to see if there is money available with that, that we, we bring it back and do that, that piece in my, you know, that, I think that taxpayers are talking about wanting to have that, that happen as well, around, you know, trails and that kind of thing. I think there's a lot of support around that. And I don't know if it makes sense to have, you know, your first project be the ice gardens, and the second one would be the, the trails, because now, now you got a big gap there in terms of money. I don't know that, that makes any sense either. Then come back with a, with a community center. So, you know, if you are amenable to, to this idea of bringing it back, once we, we look at the, you know, what may the overruns be with, you know, with the community center slash health, health and wellness, you know, I could see myself putting forward, you know, B.
All right. And, and let's be clear, that's, I appreciate that. Thank you, councilmember. But let's be clear, we're, we're not talking overruns here. We're talking estimates that, that keep going up. And I, I mean, you say overruns, and it sounds as though we're, we're falling short. But these are just the, the reevaluations and, and looking at the cost estimates to try and get a better idea of what, but I, but I understand what you're saying, so.
Thank you for, for clarifying that. Yeah, they're not over, overruns. What I, what I mean is, is also certainly what you mean, that, you know, sometimes our residents may say, hey, you know, I, I want the aquatics, and I also want, you know, a, you know, a cost, you know, a garage as well, so we can maximize that. So that's what I meant. I think that's what you're saying too, yeah.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess, yeah, just kind of some, some loose nose counting. Overall, I, I think it would make sense to come back and take a look at the Nine Mile Creek Trail projects, but through the lens of, does this qualify for the Minnesota Parks and Trail Legacy Grant Program? Does this qualify, which would still have to meet those high standards, but gives us more time to put that application together, to prove the regional significance, things like that. So it's, I, I do like that coming back. The funding screen just might not be this one. So I, unless there's, I don't want to step on anybody, but I'm happy to move Option B.
Councilmember DeLisandro, did you have?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Martin?
Perfect. Let me get my cheat sheet.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, before you make the motion, councilmember Martin, just want to clarify, because we have an unusual number of councilmembers, and look to the city attorney to correct me if I'm wrong, but the passage of this resolution will require four affirmative votes of the council.
Which I think stands to logic anyway, because if there were, there were less than four, it would be, well, no, I'm sorry. I was thinking we were going to have six here again tonight. I'm sorry, my bad.
Right. It's a majority of the council.
Not a majority of the council president.
And not a majority of council president, correct.
All right.
Well, so. Councilmember DeLisandro, I'm still not comfortable voting yes on Option B, but if, if everybody else is gonna, then we'll be fine, I guess, is the point here. But, you know, I, I don't think, I think we should take every opportunity we can to prioritize natural resources funding in the city, just based on what we know about custom, our, 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 our community and what they've told us. And so I, you know, I, it, it won't necessarily hurt the outcome tonight, depending on where you all are, but I, it has nothing to do with not wanting all of these projects to be, to be, you know, out there with the legislature. I would like to see all three of them. So I just make sure that you know that ahead of time here, but I have no problem with y'all calling the, calling the vote.
Very good. Councilmember Martin did?
Happy to make the motion. Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution approving a local sales tax and authorizing actions to be taken by the city in connection with such taxes as reflected in proposed projects, Option B.
Councilmember Lohman?
You know, Mayor, I don't want to be the, the second no vote, so I, I've got to be real specific, because I, you know, like, Councilman DeLisandro, want to make sure that, that there, that we also have a look at this and bring it back, once we have determined with what both, both the ice garden and what we do with the Health and Wellness Center. So I just want to be sure that the, the motion includes the idea that, you know, that we would, once we've got that figured out, and maybe look at other streams that maybe, maybe be more appropriate, or maybe quicker, that if those don't pan out, that we, you know, and if those other two, you know, if there's a little bit of extra money left over, that we'd look to put another proposal back out, if that, if that could be understood.
Appreciate it, councilmember. We, we officially need a second before we go into the discussions. Continue.
Well, I was saying a second if, if the mover understands that, that that's what I'm, you know, seconding, if that would be amenable to you, to your, to your motion.
I, yes. Logistically, I don't want to tie us to any, pursuing any funding streams or anything specific, but to say we're going to circle back for an additional conversation about funding Nine Mile Creek trail improvements at some point, I think that makes sense as an amendment.
I might suggest, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, if that's a desire of the council, to do a second motion directing staff after the consideration of the resolution.
So councilmember Lohman, our, so we've got a motion.
So I'd be happy to make, what I'd rather do is I'd like to have that first, that the second motion that you just mentioned, manager, voted on first, and then we can come back to the first piece, because I, that's going to determine whether or not I support that or not.
I will second your motion, councilmember Martin, so we can now have some discussion on this. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I will not support the motion, because I think the natural resources and the trail portion is, should be in this. I still have concerns about the community center as it is. I, I don't know that what we're looking at right now meets the vision of the original task force in terms of an indoor/outdoor, year-round facility that people can use. And with regards to councilmember Lohman's part of it, I think that that could just be integrated into this, that the direction could just be added to, in addition to, you could just add the direction to the motion and make it into one motion, that it, it approved Plan B and directed staff to do that, if that made councilmember Lohman more comfortable. So, but that's not the motion on the table. I think there'd be, there'd need to be an amendment of the motion to do that, but I, I, you know that better than I do.
So if, 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 councilmember Nelson, if you're moving to amend the motion, I'd be happy to second that.
I'll amend the motion to direct staff to look at pursuing funding opportunities for Nine Mile Creek.
Mayor, would it be helpful for me to summarize?
It would be very helpful, yes, thank you.
So, Mayor members, we have a motion on the table to adopt the written motion that's in the packet indicating specifically Option B. There's a motion and a second on that. What I'm hearing now is a motion within, the primary motion, to potentially amend. Is that what is seeking to happen, or is there a desire by the original motioner to amend their original motion?
If it would save us some time, I'm happy to take that and stick it on the first one.
And the seconder, Mayor, are you comfortable? Okay, so for clarity's sake, would you be comfortable with me restating that, what I'm hearing the council say?
Or, or would it be best to withdraw this motion and start it from scratch?
That'd be even better. Yeah.
Councilmember Martin?
Motion withdrawn.
Okay.
All right.
So what I hear is a motion to adopt the resolution number, the resolution approving a local sales tax and authorizing actions to be taken by the council in connection with such taxes for Option B, and directing staff to pursue funding options in pursuit of full funding for the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Project as identified and explained in Option A.
So moved.
Is that, is that accurate?
And I'd be happy to.
And I'd be happy to.
That's accurate, yes.
I'd be happy to second that, if, if understanding that that could mean coming back and putting that with the local sales tax piece. I know we're not stating that specifically, but I want to just be sure that that's, it could be.
Well.
But just to be clear, though.
But that can't happen, because they, it's due by Jan, by January 30th, and we don't have another meeting between now and then.
No, it's clear, but I'm saying in future years. I'm not saying, yeah, that's what I'm asking, so.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Lowman, just so I understand, and I think I do, is that this holds open the option that local option sales tax is a potential funding source for the Nine Mile Creek renewal, as we identify the various level, or various options for revenues.
So is that an official second?
That's an official second, with that understanding of it.
We've got a motion by councilmember Martin, a second by councilmember Lowman, for the, the motion that stated by our, our city attorney, that approving a local sales tax and authorizing actions to be taken by the city in connection with sales taxes for proposed option B, and directing staff to pursue future funding options for the Nine Mile Creek Corridor renewal. Everybody clear on that? Any further council discussion on this? Councilmember Nelson?
I was just getting ready to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were. Very good. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three, two, but ultimately fails three, two, because we don't have four votes. Very good. Then we move on.
Are we allowed to make a motion for option A?
I don't see why not, yes.
I mean, if I could, if I could be so, I'll make the motion and we can have a discussion about it. So I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution approving a local sales tax and authorizing actions to be taken by the city in connection with such taxes include, in, in, as identified or as defined in option A.
Second.
Motion by councilmembers, Delisandro, a second by councilmember Lowman, to move forward and to do, use the proposed projects under option A. Council discussion on this?
If I may. Thank you, Mayor. So my, I don't want us to miss the opportunity to put this in front of the legislature. And I, and I completely, like I said, understand the, your process in terms of, you know, suggesting A and B. I think, again, my, my thought is, we, we get as much as we can approved by the legislature, and we put it in front of our voters, and we let them help us decide. And I understand that the local options, let's say, let's say we get, it's 85 million as opposed to 115 million for, for, for the Community Health and Wellness Center, right? That's still an enormous chunk of money towards that project. And in my view, especially with the Nine Mile Creek project maybe getting approved and the big getting approved, there, there's 30 million or so in the CIP, not that, again, it's a funding source, but we, we, we've essentially enabled that 30 million extra that we might need for the Community Health and Wellness Center to be available in capital, without increasing the planned impact to our residents. So that would be the, my, my reasoning for suggesting that. If that's helpful to get anybody over the hump, thank you.
Additional council discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So my, my question is, we go in for this funding, get approval, what is the process, specifically mostly regards to the community center, of how that project gets scoped out, defined, so that we know that we're expending the money, we're, we're reached, again, my concern was, this doesn't seem to fit the original vision of the task force. How do we get there if we can, and what's the community process to do that?
Mr. Brugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, we have not anticipated, just going forward with the previous building program for this project, if it's approved by the voters, if the legislature grants us the authority, we would go through a whole new process of engagement and, and facility design to get to a project. And frankly, we'll need to do that once we know what the number is, right? So we'll know what we're working with. And I, I was reminded, I could have provided more clarity to your question in terms of, you know, some of the cost increase assumptions, is that we are assuming a construction year of 2024 for the ice garden, because that one is pretty well set. So as soon as we have the authority, we can move pretty quickly to final design documents. We are not assuming that for the Community Health and Wellness Center. We're actually targeting probably a late 2025 project start. So that's part of the assumption, is that we have an additional, probably 18 months of potential inflationary impact on that project, because of the need to go back and do much of the design work.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, there'll be ample community input into that, in the programming and everything like that, it'll, and then the other projects are fairly well-defined and could go quickly.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Nelson, one of the conversations we've been having internally is just frankly, frankly, the sequencing of when we do planning in advance of a potential referendum, and how much planning to do. And where we're at right now, is that the vast majority of that work would happen after the referendum, simply because we don't want to be in the position we were in before of expending a fair amount of resources to do a lot of work that then ultimately just doesn't go anywhere, because voters turn it down.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowman?
Mayor, I wonder if it makes some sense, you know, depending on where certain councilmembers are at, I, I think I've heard that almost everyone here supports the ice garden. I wonder if it makes some sense to put through the ice garden, and then vote on the other two, and add those other ones on.
Well, we have a motion on the table for option A right now.
I'm looking at the, the motioner, but, and just wondering if, you know, and I'm directing it to you, because you're preceding this thing, but I wonder, I'm wondering if it makes some sense, because we want to, you know, make sure we take advantage, just because we've got till the end of the month. You know, certainly if we vote on this, but I, I think we all agree, we need to put the ice garden forward, and I think that, you know, as the motioner's made, I totally agree, we don't want to leave this money on the table. So I'm certainly willing to, to make the move over, but I think there's, you know, I, I hear disagreement in terms of some folks, in terms of their priority, in terms of wanting to put forward. And I also, I, I trust staff, if they say, hey, we're concerned, you know, about all three of these projects being, you know, on the, on the list, and I hear another councilmember is, is asking a very, you know, reasonable question. You know, once we go through that community engagement piece, we may, you know, discover that, you know, 100, you know, 115 is not enough, or, you know, or, or we want to do, do more with that. So, so certainly I hear what, what staff is saying, but I do, I don't want to leave that money on the table. So I don't know if you want to, I just want to throw that out there.
Mr. Mayor and councilmember Lowman, I, I suggest we vote option A, and if not, if we could construct a third motion to provide some compromise if we had to. That would be my opinion, so if you.
I would agree with you.
Okay.
Yep, I would agree with you. We do have a motion and a second on the table for option A. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and, and anybody in the community that's watching, just so everybody's clear about the process, we will communicate option A resolution that was passed to the tax chairs in the House and the Senate. We will do that in advance of the deadline. Our legislative delegation was already preparing bills with both options, so we will notify them immediately of which option we're pursuing, so they know which one to proceed with.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before we move on, I, I do, I want to caution against, well, how do I say this? I, I think that it would be prudent for us to have a little bit of clarity prior to the referendum on the Health and Wellness Center. I, you know, we have been, we've been in trouble with that before, right? Where, you know.
We're just trying to figure out what the right level is.
Okay, okay.
And we'll come back to the council and talk about that.
Yes, sir. Your question, your comment about most could happen, that concerned me, so thank you. Appreciate that.
Very good. Moving on on our agenda, item 4.2, our second public hearing of the evening. This is regarding amendments to our earned sick and safe leave ordinance. And Amir Malik, our compliance manager and our legal team. Oh, I'm sorry, Melissa's going to kick us off. I apologize, Ms. Manderscheid.
I just decided I would, I would set the table a little bit. Amir, you want to come up? This is Amir's first presentation, so I thought, you know, I'd.
Well, I was going to greet him.
Plus, everyone get a chance to exhale from the last conversation. So, you want to pull the PowerPoint? So Amir put together a PowerPoint, and we're going to go over some history, or he's going to go over some history, and then set the table for where we are right now. And there are two motions for your consideration at the end.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Mr. Malik, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor and members, I'll keep this short, and then be available for any questions you have, and I think that'll be the priority. So, yeah, just, you're more familiar with the background than I am, so I'll make that quick. There was a task force, you know, they went over everything, and the council passed this June 13th, and it was, it's be effective July 1st. Yep, city attorney's office, we're going to be handling compliance. I guess the newer things would be the outreach we've done on this amendment. We don't want to have any pushback of people not being aware of it. So in December, we mailed and emailed 500-plus businesses in Bloomington, and talking to them about the amendment, seeing if there was any need for feedback. We also met with the BCVB, talked to them about this, looking to partner with them on outreach, especially to the hospitality industry, hotels in Bloomington. And from December, actually, no, from even earlier, that with Mall of America. So since I was hired, I have been in coordination with Mall of America to make sure they know everything that's happening. And, yes, so that, that's been the outreach and education that we've done so far. And, yeah, let me just discuss the amendments, if you go to the next, okay? So there were just a few things that wanted to make a change, so we can have a smooth implementation in July. So one is to provide this employee sick and safe time balances on their pay stubs. And I'll just go through the three changes and then give an explanation of them. So it would show how, how many, someone be able to look at their pay stub and know how many hours they've accrued, and how many they've used. And the second one, it's more of a procedural issue, where the ordinance can be interpreted to mean that businesses cannot accrue in fractional amounts, which would be problematic. The city of Bloomington accrues in fractional amounts. So we're just making a small change, saying it's up to the employer. If you want to do whole hours, you can do whole hours. If you want to do fractional, it can be fractional. So that was more of a, just a technical change, but it's fair to get it out of the way now. And then the last one, there are certain provisions in the ordinance for lack of compliance, and this establishes penalties for not being in compliance, for instance, not having the required poster up, or not keeping records of sick and safe time usage. So this just adds in, and clarifies what the exact penalties would be if a business is not in compliance, especially with the procedural side of it. And, okay, so just couldn't go through what they do. The first one, the ideal for this ordinance, at least for me, is that there are as few complaints as possible. And my past experience, so as you know, I was enforcing the implementation of this in Minneapolis for about three and a half years, is you ended up with conflict between employers and employees. We were never told about this. Yes, you were. I told you on this date. And it's bad for morale, and it just causes a lot of conflict, and ideally, if we could reduce that. So what happened is, 2017, Minneapolis had passed their sick and safe time law, then we realized the problem. And then January 1st of 2020 is when this change was made in Minneapolis, where it has to go on the pay stubs. I would like to just skip past that part that I had to deal with, because I was enforcing during that time and handling all employer interactions. So instead of doing that, just at the beginning, we could have it on the pay stub. And then hopefully that would, that would make it a better, in a smoother way to implement this, because if the employee is saying, I didn't know about any of this, then the employer could say, well, you should look at your pay stub. And then if it's not on the pay stub, then you also have a clear thing to talk about with employers. I think one thing that will make this much easier is the fact that it's already being done in Minneapolis. And so it's not, for payroll providers, it won't be a strange thing to have it on the pay stubs. I mean, the city, for city of Bloomington employees, it's already on the pay stub. And for, you know, other businesses, they're all be used to this from Minneapolis. Other things on that, I think, just, yeah, just overall, I think the more clarity that there can be for businesses, and for employers and employees, we don't need this to, you know, cause conflict. The second one, yeah, I, there's really not much to say on the second one. It's just a, a technical change that needs to be made, because there, what you could say an employer is in violation by doing what? I actually don't know of a large business that doesn't accrue fractionally. Everybody I dealt with in Minneapolis, everybody does fractionally. I think it's a lot easier, and Bloomington does also fractionally. So that's just a technical change to keep people. And then the last one, a smoother way also to get compliance is to actually have compliance. So if we have, you know, businesses understand, okay, you know, city staff came, they gave us a beautifully made and laminated poster, and we should keep it on the wall. If we don't, this is what would happen. So I, I think that is important, because, yeah, it's, yes, we're, we are planning, and it's, there's another slide talking about our outreach, going door to door and, and giving out the poster and explaining things, but the poster still needs to be up on the wall. And, you know, it's, there needs to be, you know, carrot and stick approach, like, here's a poster, stick it on the wall, leave it on the wall. Because, yeah, sometimes, many times, it was just not kept up there, and these are basic things that have to be done. And also, like I said, when it comes to keeping payroll records, there needs to be adjustments on that, and, you know, I will, I'll talk about that on the next slide, how we're going to help for that. So, so this would just be an example of, you know, what we're talking about. Many of you probably see this on your pay stubs, but, yeah, it'd just be something clear as an example. It's up to the employer, you know exactly how they do it, but someone would be able to look up there, and they would say, okay, this is how many hours I have. But of course, the city is not prescribing exactly how to do it. You don't need to have anything that actually says sick and safe time. You know, I've had conversations with large businesses, and they just call everything PTO. City of Bloomington is fine with that. We don't need a separate bucket for safe time. It's just about how you get to use it. As long as you can use your hours in a way that meets the conditions of Bloomington's earned sick and safe leave ordinance, you can call it what you want. And so this one shows an example of vacation and sick time. Some employers may just decide to call everything PTO, or, you know, you'll have different options. But the important part is, we want the employee to be able to look at their pay stub, know exactly how much is accrued, and I get, I'll mention just a couple other issues that have come up there with. Um, with, uh, employees, you know, when you don't have it on the pay stub, many employees, uh, are uncomfortable asking about this issue. Um, there may be language barriers, technology barriers, or just bad employer-employee relations. And so this takes away all of that, hopefully. And then our last slide for the, uh, um, talking about, uh, our outreach. Because, you know, if we're going to ask businesses to do this, you know, city staff should help as much as they can. So one, uh, like I said, we'll be, uh, handing out the required poster and going door to door. Uh, I've already am, uh, scheduled to speak at the Mall of America attendance meeting next month. Um, and, uh, the city attorneys, Paralegal, Laura Pu and I, will be going around door to door, having these one-on-one conversations to go over what the expectations are, what we can do to help. Um, so we'll be starting that, um, immediately. And then the other point here, I, I'm excited about just talking with different city staff about the relationships, uh, Bloomington already has. Uh, Hennepin County contracts with, uh, an organization called Elevate Business. And any Bloomington business can get 25 hours of free assistance, um, from various consultants, legal, tax, payroll, these things. And so they can update their policies and payroll systems to comply with the ordinance. I don't have my head in the sand that every business can just snap their fingers and have this on their pay stubs. This is going to affect, um, a number of especially small businesses. And so having this free service and having, what, six months or so to get this on the pay stubs, um, I think will do a lot towards, uh, making this a smooth transition. So as part of this going door to door, we'll be talking about these resources that these businesses have and how they can get this, uh, get this done. And like I mentioned, we're already working with, with Mall of America. And then we talked about also, um, the last part, uh, existing relationships. So, um, I've been in contact with, uh, environmental health, and there was actually a meeting this morning. We will be accompanying them on their inspections because if you have management there, why not talk to them? So we'll be going over with them, uh, this amendment and how to implement Earn Sick and Safe Leave. And then we'll be also working with, uh, Bloomington Public Schools so that this can be, uh, parents are knowledgeable about this. I'm hoping to have this as part of their orientation materials. We'll be talking to them about making it known when your, um, your, your child is not going to be at school, they're out sick. So we'll be work, you know, my short time here has shown me that, uh, uh, different staff seem connected to everything in Bloomington. So I think it's important not to recreate the wheel and use those existing relationships, um, to have a smooth implementation of this. And, uh, we're ready for questions. Thank you, mayor and members.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. I understand, I mispronounced your name earlier. I apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you.
Council questions, Mr. Malik. Council member DeLaSandro.
Yeah, so, thank you for the presentation. Since I read the, the, um, brief, uh, prior to tonight, I've been concerned about, um, the, the pay stub requirement, not because I don't understand everything that you're saying, but because I, I keep envisioning a, a, a small business that still handwrites checks and how does that work and things like that. And so because we made the limit for compliance with this, um, so, uh, well, it doesn't really matter, I guess, at this point. I, I just wonder, what is your experience? If you could share with us what your experience is? You know, I, what I'd hate to be in the position of is that the city of Bloomington has cost these small businesses money now because they have to implement a system just to get the thing on a pay stub, right? If that's, if that's not your experience and that didn't happen, I'm eager to hear about it. And, and, um, I, yeah, that makes sense, uh, to everyone. Um, I just want to be sure we're, we're not putting an undue burden for the purposes of compliance in this particular area. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, mayor and members. Um, so my experience has been that, you know, there is some inertia on this point. You know, i- it's going to take conversations. Um, what helped in Minneapolis many times on small businesses was reaching out to payroll providers. Uh, many business owners, they're focused on their business and many times not details like payroll. So, um, just an example, we, there was like a number of different, um, uh, you know, bubble tea establishments in Minneapolis. And then we ended up finding out that they're all using the same, uh, accountant. So then you reach out to the accountant and it was a lot easier on that side to have the accountant then explain to them, "Yeah, I can do this. It's not, it's not a big deal." We also had businesses who, um, thought their payroll provider couldn't do it. And they said, "No, they can't." So on, on that side, um, I think if the city is taking a collaborative approach with businesses and reaching and having these conversations, because like I said a number of times, um, there's just knowledge or language issues or, or these things where, and I'd be like, "No, we actually dealt with this payroll provider." Like, I'd be told, like, someone said, "Oh, I use ADP." They won't, they said, "No." I'm like, "No, ADP actually does it for a lot of businesses, but there's just sometimes confusion on this." And that's why I think having those 25 hours of, um, of dedicated and free consulting will help get this done. But, yes, there, there are adjustments that will have to be made. This is something new. Um, and, uh, but, like I said, having this lead time of this many months to get it done, I think will, uh, reduce the burden considerably because it's not something that has to be done quickly. And at least I don't, I can't speak for Bloomington, but in, uh, in Minneapolis, it was normal that someone was having someone do their payroll. It might be a small business. It might be just a local, you know, county who just helps small businesses, not paychecks or ADP. But in general, it was a normal thing that they, they had some help or their accountant or somebody who would, who would deal with this for them.
Councilmember Lomond?
So just so I under- understand that, is there any requirement from the state or the federal to provide stubs, uh, pay stubs?
Ye- yes. Yes. It's state law. You have to provide pay stubs. The, the change we're making is that you have to put the, uh, Earn Sick and Safe Leave hours on the pay stub.
So that's a requirement, right?
Yes.
You gotta have that.
Yes.
I mean, because I'm like, uh-oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Um, can you tell you a little bit to your outreach or your programming for business that, businesses that are not located in Bloomington but do business in Bloomington and how you're working to help them?
No, absolutely. Um, so you will have, uh, a number of businesses that have employ, people doing work in Bloomington, but they may be working remotely, or there just may be other, um, issues. So we have a few ways that we'll be looking to reach out to them. Uh, one is we have email lists. We have, uh, uh, I'm, I'm trying, I think it's called, there's another one the city has. I'm still, I think it's called e-subscribe. Um, so there, there are ways that they can, uh, reach out. Um, but we're also putting in, um, outreach to people in Bloomington. Uh, being in the Bloomington Brief, we'll be there, uh, multiple times. Um, we're sending, uh, we're also looking to do, uh, social media ads. We're, we're planning to record videos, putting them in multiple languages. We'll be looking at, uh, whether it's, uh, Facebook, YouTube, however we can get the, however we can get the word out. Um, but the other part is, you know, i- if it doesn't register with somebody, then, you know, if there ends up being an initial complaint, I think that's the other part of, you know, being conscientious staff is to deal with it quickly, help the employer to get into compliance and, uh, move forward from there.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Just one quick suggestion is work with community development inspections. We have a number of building contractors, obviously building lots of buildings and things like that, and their trade partners and things like that, that maybe having people doing significant time here, that may be a group to reach out to.
Yep.
Thank you, councilmember. Others? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Sorry, I should have asked this question earlier. I, I do find myself coming up with new questions as other people talk, and I apologize for that. Um, thank you, Mr. Malik. Um, i- is there any, is there any compliance different on the administrative fees? So there are, we have, we have two groups of, of folks, uh, here. We have folks that are, uh, everyone is obligated to provide unpaid, but there's the, above five, I think it's paid. And, uh, and so is the accrual process or the, the compliance requirements different between those two groups? Um, I mean, obviously the pay part is, but is the compliance requirement different? And so would somebody, um, who is in violation of, uh, the pay stub thing? For example, who is accruing unpaid leave have a different penalty? Or would it be the same penalty?
Well, in general, I guess I'm going with past experience. The unpaid leave has not, in general, is not an issue. Um, pro, these things in g- are often, so you have two, two routes that a complaint comes. Either one, someone submits a complaint. And so if we give the example of, if you have fewer than five employees, um, the complaint would end up being in effect that I was, you know, I was sick. I wanted to take this time off, um, unpaid, and they said, "No." Okay? Uh, yeah, administratively, it would change, um, I guess the penalties are different in that, you know, you pay somebody at their rate of pay for the paid sick leave. But if they don't have paid sick leave, then that part of the, it, it's, um, um, that's not relevant in this case. So what would happen instead is working with the employer to get their policy into compliance, which is actually a lot what happens. Uh, a lot of these violations end up with policy changes. Changes to handbooks, changes to policies, where you explain to them, "No, you actually have to let them." Uh, and then you can just have them change their policy for it. I haven't had a situation where a business refused on that side when it's unpaid anyway. Um, so I don't know for sure, like, how this would look because it hasn't happened, to my knowledge, before. The problem is the pay part, which is unpaid.
So in other words, we wouldn't be able to, there wouldn't be any penalty, meaning they wouldn't have to pay the employee because there's no pay, but we'd still maybe, uh, uh, we, we might assess the fines either way?
Yeah, but a lot of these, I'm sorry, mayor and members, a lot of these, if you're, you know, so these penalties are not, um, mandatory. And so many times what you get is a, uh, is a settlement. So, okay, you didn't do this, and maybe you, I'll give you some situations we had. Okay, you put disciplinary points on this employee because they were out sick. The ordinance forbids that. You're going to, and then they're like, "Okay, I'll take the disciplinary points off, and here's my new policy manual. Are you okay with this?" And then if everybody's happy, many times, that's the end of it. You just come with a settlement, but now they're, you know, the, the goal for, my understanding of my goal is to get ongoing compliance. You know, yes, if businesses are just not willing to cooperate, they're like, "We don't have paid sick time. We don't have unpaid sick time." That, yes, we're going to have to move forward from that. But in this case, yes, these penalties are, um, uh, not required to put on them if you can find other ways to get into compliance that work for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. We will move on and open our public hearing on item 4.2 here. This is a public hearing regarding our amendments to our Earn Sick and Safe Leave ordinance. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to our Earn Sick and Safe Leave ordinance amendments? Please come forward.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Daniel Candidate. I'm a human resources manager here in the city of Bloomington, uh, for a local refrigeration HVAC supplier. Um, one of my potential issues, uh, with the requirement on pay stubs is for transparency reasons with employees. Just having worked in HR for a decade now, my goal is to be the person that people can come to, that people can understand their benefits. And pay stubs do not come out the day after the pay cycle ends. And I've had issues with people looking at their stub and like, "Well, it says 15 hours here. My balance online shows nine." It's like, "Well, you used on Monday that many hours." Um, and to me, it's, it's not an issue of explaining to one individual. It's the fact that we do have several individuals, and I like to make sure that everybody understands all of their benefits and how they, you know, are currently applied. Uh, so, you know, when we have rollover at the end of the year, like this talks about with the max of 80 rollover, there's always questions that come up at the end of the year and making sure that people understand, yes, when rollover happens, you know, you have a max of 80. I mean, we reached out to everybody in November saying, "Hey, you know, your cap is 80 to rollover. Make sure you use it." Um, and I just like to make sure that we don't have any discrepancy in understanding, uh, for employees that they're not seeing their, uh, transactions and as well with, uh, ADP. I know we do, there are a couple of different ways to measure it in ADP. Um, one includes with scheduled time off being taken from your bank. So employees will see, "All right, I have five hours even though I really have 45 because I have 40 scheduled for next week, so it's not showing an accurate amount." And if an employee cancels that amount, the change that can be seen from paycheck to paycheck, to me, could be an issue for ongoing compliance and understanding. Um, so I just, I like to make sure everybody understands.
And I think that's a, a laudable goal. I think that's absolutely, yeah, what we're trying to do here as well.
And so we, we already provide above and beyond, you know, on the, on the amount of time. So, I mean, that's, that's not an issue for us. And I know that's, you know, potentially different than the point of this, uh, law is to get to the people that aren't being currently offered that. Um, but, you know, I'd say, I like to make sure that, uh, everybody understands. And I, I know we have to explain, even when just people are used to working overtime and don't, you know, they're not always looking at their pay stubs, just, "I saw what, you know, my bank statement says, and it is lower than last time." It's like, "Well, we were closed last Saturday. We didn't offer overtime." It was like, and then you walk through each day of the week with them, like, "Here's your pay stub and here's your hour statement and..."
To be clear, you already list the, the available PTO for, on, on their pay stubs, and you're worried that this might complicate things?
Not, not on their pay stub. We list it in an online system.
Online system, got it. Okay, okay. Good.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, if you could, if you could sign in, just so we know who you are, please. Anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on this? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, you have, uh, mayor and councilmembers, no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Not seeing anyone coming forward. We've got no one on the phone. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Second? Motion by councilmember Lomond, second by councilmember Martin, to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So counsel, uh, any additional questions or discussion regarding the amendments to the Earn Sick and Safe Leave ordinance? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Yeah, this is, I appreciate the, the gentleman coming forward. Uh, this is what I was thinking about, right? We have multiple ways of getting to this, right? One is, it, it, it matters more that the, at any given moment, that employee can understand what they, what they have available to them, right? That, that's what we're, that's the compliance we're trying to get to. Um, uh, so is it, is it unnaturally restrictive to say... So is it, is it unnaturally restrictive to say it's on the pay stub? As opposed to writing in the ordinance in a way that says you must comply with, you know, timely notice of accrued out, accrued sick leave and available sick leave and leave it up to the employer to determine how to do that. Some will use an online system. That's how I do mine, for example, right? Um, I never use my paycheck as the rule because to the gentleman's point, if they're, if they're paid in arrears a week, it's not necessarily accumulated, right? In the same timeframe as I might use it. And it's against hours worked, not necessarily hours paid in the case of management employees, right? So, so, um, I, I don't know. This is the one area where I was a little bit uncomfortable with being so prescriptive about how it needs to be reported. So I throw that out in case anybody has any ideas.
Mr. Malik, I'll, I'll turn to you. Uh, in your experience, uh, we, we heard from the, we heard from the gentleman from HR here on, in your experience, is this, is this an issue or is this a, uh, an issue to, to be overly concerned about? Or is this just a kind of a get used to it kind of thing for employees and employers?
Okay, thank you, mayor and members. What we've seen is, well, one, employers who are having this type of conversation, like what we just heard, are the least likely to have problems because they're actually interested in offering earned sick and safe leave. And so when I've had, uh, uh, these types of conversations, that's, I guess, not where the, that's not what this ordinance is focused on, those type of employers. For instance, uh, there are some employers that will say, and that's why we have an extensive FAQ that will go on along with this, um, to talk about different situations. For instance, if on your pay stub, like it's all on, you know, online and everybody always uses it. If there's a, on the pay stub, there's a link and you click it and it automatically takes you to your earned sick and safe leave hours, that would be fine. Um, but what we don't want is we're looking at, I guess the situations we're looking at, uh, many businesses that offer sick and safe leave don't envision this, you know? It's a, it's the person who's told, you know, you have three options. You can either find someone to cover your shift. You can keep working when you're sick, just don't throw up on the customers. Or you can, um, you can go home, just don't come back. And so this is the situation for many employees versus the employer who is, um, is saying, well, we have this, uh, this online system. I've had this discussion with, uh, certain large businesses in Bloomington. And yeah, it's just not how the ordinance is focused on. If, if someone, there's a system that everybody uses and that everybody has access to, it's not something where you have to uncomfortably ask your employer, hey, can I use your computer? And they're like looking over your head, wonder, you know, and you know that they're against sick and safe leave and you're putting your job in danger. So if it's not that type of, you know, situation, it's like, you know, you log in and you see it, you can click and there's your, uh, and there's your sick and safe leave hours, that's not going to be a violation. And when we talk about a lag period, um, that's also not a violation. If the hours that you're seeing are not exactly what you have, that's built into the ordinance. If you're updating like once a month, the number of hours, just because an employee is not happy about the situation doesn't make it a violation. And that's where the interaction is.
You've seen this, but it's, it's, there are, you're leaving it up to the individual employers to try and, and work through this. But there's, it's not very prescriptive, but you've also not seen this to be an enormous problem. There may be some issues here and there, but it's not an enormous problem.
Yes, mayor, I, we haven't seen that way. And, and for businesses that when we're talking about ones that are across the country, they find something like this, um, they prefer something that's prescriptive, uh, because it matches up. Like that, you'll just end up, the nature of this dealing with people in like Texas and California, everything, they're like, oh, okay. Like San Francisco, okay, we'll match it up with there. So a lot of these ordinances, they're very, very similar in San Francisco and San Diego and Philadelphia and Minneapolis.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowman?
So mayor, I don't know if there's anybody else who has any comments, but I'm happy to make this motion.
Councilmember Lowman?
Mayor, I'd move to adopt an ordinance amending Article One of Chapter 23 of the city code regarding earned sick and safe leave and amending a PTO X A relating to administrative relief and fees.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Council, Councilmember Martin to adopt the ordinance amending Article One of Chapter 23 of the city code regarding earned sick and safe leave. No further council questions on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Councilmember Lowman, summary publication.
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending Article One of Chapter 23 of the city code regarding earned sick and safe leave and amending a PTO X A relating to administrative relief and fees.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin for summary publication on item four point two. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Malik.
Thank you.
Moving on to our organizational business and item five point one, which is an update, uh, on our sign ordinance. This is basically a study item. We're just going to be talking through a bunch of things and, uh, working our way through. I see Nick Johnson from our planning department here is.
I'm Kevin Toski, I'm Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Mayor.
Kevin, have, I don't believe we've seen you before yet, have we?
This is my first time. You're correct.
Wow, you've got first timers all over the place.
Been here about, been here about a year, so yeah, this is the first time.
Well, welcome. Good to see you.
Uh, mayor, uh, you have an alma mater in common with Kevin, so, uh, you both come from the League of Minnesota Cities.
Ah, very good.
Mayor Boosie, thank you. Uh, good to be here. Uh, mayor and members, good to see you all. So tonight, we're going to do a study item on signs. Our goal here for this item is to kind of accomplish two things. One is kind of laying the groundwork and, uh, foundation for, uh, why we're updating the signed ordinance or what are the kind of the key considerations and goals, uh, for the project, uh, in general. And then the second piece of what we want to accomplish tonight is kind of capture directionally where the council, uh, wants to go with, uh, the, this regulatory tool. And, um, uh, we got some good feedback from planning commission, so, uh, it's kind of a continuation of that previous effort with them uh, to ensure that directionally, we're kind of moving, uh, where the, where the decision makers want us to go before we really, uh, spend a lot of resources drafting the, uh, more land use elements of the ordinance. So that's just a simple agenda slide of what we plan to talk about. Uh, we will try and be brief as we move through some of these things. Okay, real, really quickly, I know you all are very familiar with what the signed ordinance is and does, uh, for the city of Bloomington. It does live in the zoning code, um, but just generally speaking for members of the public or other interested parties, uh, the sign ordinance regulates commercial and non-commercial speech, uh, generally. Most sign ordinances, sign ordinances, uh, across the country attempt to strike some type of balance between, uh, promoting and allowing expression while also, uh, protecting public safety, uh, as well as consideration for community aesthetics. What do we want our community to look like? Our business districts, districts, industrial properties, uh, mixed use areas, downtown, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all considerations that, uh, you'll see reflected in sign ordinances. Uh, and that's just, uh, as I said, the, it lives in the, um, zoning code. So just in terms of background and history, um, kind of the, the effort that you're embarking on here hasn't been pursued since 1996. Uh, mayor, I remember your comment during the work plan that, um, uh, there was, I think Punky Brewster was on television or something the last time that we did this. Um, something along those lines, but, um, uh, yeah, so we haven't looked at this in a long time in a comprehensive way. There's been a number of iterative or kind of minor changes as we've added new zoning districts. Obviously we have to, there's a lot of things that are connected to the signed ordinance. We've had to make a lot of, uh, changes along the way, um, but no comprehensive, uh, look at it. And Kevin's going to talk about the legal reasons why we need to update our sign ordinance. Uh, and that's really kind of the most pressing, uh, piece of it, um, in terms of the things that have changed since that era. But there's, you know, there's a, there's a, a number of different best practice reasons to look at too. So before we embarked on this, we knew that we had to, uh, update the sign ordinance to address, uh, kind of recent case law around constitutional issues and other elements of the sign ordinance. Uh, but we also did a kind of a robust internal staff discussion, you know, with community development staff, uh, mostly planning staff, but we did invite some other members, uh, as well. Uh, so we have to get into conformance with legal standards. But what, what else do we want to do with our sign ordinance? And so we, we came up with two additional project goals and the second one is just improve clarity, reduce complexity. Too often, uh, the Bloomington planning staff is around a conference table, kind of going back and forth about, um, uh, a certain interpretation of our sign ordinance. It just gets too complex, uh, in certain areas where, you know, uh, two good faith minds can come to a different conclusion as to what the regulation is trying to do. And then finally, uh, just from an organizational standpoint, you've noticed many of our, uh, more recently updated content in our zoning code, particularly in chapter 21, it utilizes tables, figures, uh, other means, uh, to kind of, um, communicate, uh, regulatory requirements uh, as opposed to long redundant lists. And right now the sign ordinance is a very long series of long redundant, uh, lists of different, uh, performance standards. So when we ask, uh, for kind of directionally discussion about questions about, um, uh, where we want to take certain uh, elements of the sign ordinance in the future, uh, we'd ask to kind of remember these kind of project goals, um, as we look at it. Because, you know, to create, it's one thing to create just the perfect, uh, regulation, but if it's poorly organized or if it's overly complex, it makes it difficult for business owners as well as staff in some instances, uh, to kind of move it forward through the process. Really quickly, just here's a timeline slide. Um, uh, you know, this, this project has been delayed a little bit longer than what we, what, what we wanted to do. Uh, but this just gives you a general idea, um, of where we're going. Uh, the one thing we don't have listed on this slide here is that when we have a full, uh, robust draft, depending on how tonight goes, we might want to bring our draft ordinance at least to the planning commission for us, for an additional study session. Uh, if the council would like to engage with an actual draft, we can, uh, potentially accommodate that in our, our schedule. Uh, but this just gives you an idea of kind of where we're headed. Um, just in terms of engagement and research, um, so engagement to date, uh, we've done two, uh, we've created two sign ordinance, uh, surveys that have been directed at different audiences. You know, over a hundred and, uh, 10 parties have pulled sign permits in the city of Bloomington in the last five years. So we created a sign ordinance that really is about the, the user experience of, um, uh, the Bloomington sign ordinance that's directed mostly to sign installers. We do have some businesses who take the proactive, uh, step of pulling their own sign permits, but most often it's with, uh, signed companies. We had pretty, uh, limited participation in that survey, um, so that was a bit disappointing. But we also did survey, uh, other twin cities, metro cities about their signage, uh, provisions. And what we really wanted to hone in on there was a couple of specific questions, but also how recently had they updated their sign ordinances? We wanted to kind of pull some local ideas, um, from, from peer communities, uh, from staffs that have gone through this process recently, but also from, uh, cities that, uh, kind of rated their, um, uh, their process and how well it served their community on a high level. That was another piece of it. Um, and then in addition to that, we're certainly looking at national models, um, other model ordinances. Uh, Kevin's going to talk about the, um, the Green Espal, uh, attorney that we're working with to get some recommendations from the legal side of it. And they, they have some recommendations about, um, uh, model ordinances. So we're pulling from a long, uh, kind of a robust pool of different, um, sources of materials in order to get at what we think is best, um, for Bloomington. Oh, I should just stop and I'll, before I turn it over to Kevin, I, I think this is somewhere where I think the city council can be really helpful, uh, frankly, is that we, uh, I, I forgot to mention some of the other engagement. We're doing some of the typical things too. We have a Let's Talk Bloomington page. We did some engagement at the farmer's market. We have let some business folks that we have connections with know that we're working on this effort. But if there's other ways that we can connect with, uh, local business leaders or, um, kind of those networks, I think that's really helpful. Just because some of the things that we've done to date so far, um, haven't gotten a robust response. And not everyone likes to talk about signs. It's kind of like, I only want to engage this if I have a potential axe to grind or I didn't get the sign that I particularly liked, but, um, I guess just a, a pitch that if there's people, uh, who are good to connect with that we're not connecting with, then, uh, that'd be helpful. So I'll turn it over to you. I'm going to get those.
Before we jump into the, the legal side of things, I think, I appreciate the three goals that you put out there. And I don't know if this is a goal or exactly how to phrase it, but just to keep in mind and to consider what the council was thinking back when Punky Brewster was on, back, you know, a generation ago and what their goals were and how those might have changed to today. And I mean, how the world might have changed to today because it's, from a sign perspective, from a, a graphic design, you know, a visual design, it's just an entirely different world than it was in 1996. And so, uh, again, I'm not sure if that's a goal or if that should be a, you know, as an outcome, or I don't know how to exactly phrase it, but I think that's something we need to keep in mind.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I think, uh, the baseline of hopefully any, any work that we're pursuing and, uh, bringing forth on land use and other, uh, policy that relates to community development is hopefully best practices in general and that, that meets that test too. Um, so yeah, I take that, uh, I take that comment well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Uh, my name's mayor and members, my name is Kevin Toski. Like I said, I'm a Assistant City Attorney. I work with community development and parks, so I've been here about a year. Nick and I picked up this, uh, project from our predecessors. Uh, my predecessor left a year ago and then Nick's predecessor also left. So we kind of picked it up earlier this year from them and was still kind of in the planning stages. But I'm just going to talk a little bit about kind of the legal background of sign regulation. And I see that it's nine fifteen, so I'll try to be brief. You know, most cities around the country, they regulate their sign, signage through their land use ordinances. Bloomington's no different. Um, we regulate it in chapter 19 of our zoning code. We're all used to, to zoning decision making, you know, setbacks, conditional use permits. It's all in chapter four sixty-two of our, um, state law. Uh, when you add signage, you're adding expressive activity. So that adds a layer of complexity to it, you know, a normal decision making with zoning. You're not taking into consideration the content of, or the reasons behind why someone's doing something. And that, you know, that adds a layer of complexity and technicality to, to regulating signage because it is, there's a message on the sign, whether it's non-commercial or commercial, it's speech. So we have to be cognizant of the First Amendment whenever we're doing any regulation of expression. There's been two big cases in the Supreme Court over the past eight years or so, um, that have shaken up the, the First Amendment landscape around signage. The first was in 2015 and that's Reed versus Town of Gilbert. This sent a lot of municipalities around the country to scrambling to update their sign code after this. And Bloomington, um, did a little bit. We did, um, a few updates to kind of address this case, but not a comprehensive overview or update like we're doing now. Um, what, what Reed said is that basically anytime you regulate signage based on its content, it's going to be subject to what's called strict scrutiny and that's, uh, First Amendment tests that federal courts have come up with to evaluate First Amendment claims. I don't believe any, I think I read that no, no regulation subject to strict scrutiny has passed the Supreme Court since 1992. So if you're regulating signs based on what's on the sign, it's a problem and it'll probably be struck down in court. So that's one of the things we're, we're addressing throughout this update is making sure that we don't define signs based on what's on the sign itself, but more based on what's happening at the property, uh, where the sign is, whether it's a garage sale or there's a sale, a home sale or something like that. The second big case was earlier, uh, actually last year in 2022, and this is the City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising, a billboard case. What this said is that distinctions between premises or on, on premise signs that advertise something on the premises and off premise signs, which advertise something off the premises, that distinction's not content based and it's evaluated under a lower standard. So like Bloomington does right now, we prohibit new billboards. And that would be, uh, perfectly fine under the Reagan, uh, case that just came out last year. We can make a distinction between the two and treat off premises signs a little different and less, um, uh, more favorably than off premises signs. So just some of the legal principles that we kind of know from the case law that we're applying to this update. First, the First Amendment applies to all our sign regulation. Two, non-commercial speech is generally offered more protection of the First Amendment than commercial speech. We're trying to avoid any content based sign distinctions, uh, regulating signs based on what's on them because if that gets challenged in court, it will likely fail. So we're trying to focus on, you know, what's happening on the property where the sign is located. Trying to avoid favoring commercial speech over non-commercial speech where at all possible. This comes up with when you're creating exceptions to permits. You know, are you treating any commercial signs more favorably than say a political sign of some kind? Trying to avoid favoring certain forms of non-commercial speech over others. So whether it be something related to say like religion or politics, I mean, making sure that everything non-commercial is treated similarly across the city. And then sixth is, um, this comes up with variances. We have sign code variances and what case law is trying to tell us is that courts generally don't like, um, what's called prior restraint on speech. So when you need a pre-approval to put up a sign, courts kind of take a hard look at those. So we, we're looking through that, um, that kind of issue with our update here, so. Um, work to date, we are working with John Baker, who is an attorney at the Green Espal Law Firm, who's giving us. who's giving us some review and advice on this. He has presented all over the country on any number of land use issues. He's a litigator advisor, presents on the circuit. Melissa, the city attorney of I have seen him many times at, uh, present, doing presentations at our functions. So he's a great resource and, um, he's reviewed a couple of our drafts and we'll be reviewing the next one. So, um, that's where we're at legally. I'll be able to answer any questions. I'll let Nick kind of go through the rest of the presentation, but I'll be here at the end. Thanks.
Thank you. So now we're going to, uh, so we're, what we're here tonight, and this is what I spoke about with trying to get directionally, kind of, uh, some ideas of, uh, what the council's, uh, preferences are and, uh, kind of, uh, policy appetites are with some of these issues. Two things I had, uh, mentioned about this, again, I, I spoke about kind of the project goals. So as you kind of go through those, think about some of those things, um, uh, as number one. But number two, there's also, and this came up a little bit with planning commission, where planning commissioners did discuss kind of what their personal preferences are versus what the minimum, uh, mandatory rules should be for the local, uh, jurisdiction. Certainly we all have, uh, personal preferences, uh, with respect to some of these aesthetic, particularly more aesthetic issues. But I guess just, you know, keep being the, um, the policymaker, uh, in terms of what the, the, uh, role of government is in regulating expression and those issues. So just consideration of those things. So what we're going to do, um, is a little bit different. We're actually going to use this technology from 2007. It's a pretty antiquated now at this point. It's called Turning Point. But what it is, is it, it basically creates a, a live poll within a PowerPoint slide. So I'm going to give each of you one of these devices. I'm going to run you through a series of questions and you're going to, when the poll opens, and that's, you'll see this green kind of flashing light on the slide. Basically, you're going to pick whichever letter, uh, aligns with what your preference is. It is anonymous. Uh, there are only five of you, so I suppose it wouldn't be that hard to figure out, so, but it is anonymous. Yeah, and I do, if this fails, for whatever, this worked like a charm at planning commission, but if this fails, for whatever reason, I have a paper hard copy that we could circle and like maybe do a raise of hands. Hopefully that isn't necessary, but, um, the.
Let's hope they don't fail.
Yeah, the receiver is, uh, on my laptop, so when you, uh, press the button, kind of point it at, uh, me or at the laptop, and it should, uh, pick it up quite easily. So I'm going to come bring each of you one of these, if that's okay.
Please.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, you'll have your chance.
There was a time when we used these and the council insisted on picking their own to make sure that staff wasn't giving them something.
One that didn't work? Oh, that's funny.
That was an expert level of paranoia going on, I think.
Okay. So yeah, we'll, we'll run through a series of questions here. We're going to do a test one, just to make sure that it's working first. It has nothing to do with signage. And so we'll start with that one. On the signage related ones, hopefully we don't get too far into the, uh, into the weeds on some of them, but, um, if we do, uh, forgive me in that regard. So on this first question, the poll is open, um, so I will wait until I see five responses, uh, being logged, uh, via the devices. Um, and in this poll, it's what's your favorite mode of transportation? So I've got four responses so far. Uh-oh. So we might, oh, now here we go. Okay, thank you. So night, we're getting some interesting info on the council members tonight. Looks like cars, uh, trains and boats. Trains, wow. All right. So the, the equipment is working. That's all I was trying to establish with that slide. Okay, so the, the first sign that we, the first sign question, actual sign question that we want to run through you tonight, uh, relates to freestanding signs. And so this, this isn't something that we're getting into in the PowerPoint presentation, but basically, uh, how the existing sign ordinance works is that it establishes sign districts and assigns, uh, different zoning districts to those sign districts. And the reason it does that is that it presents, you know, different zoning districts have different land uses associated with them, of course. Uh, and they also have some certain locational or other elements, uh, associated with them. Certain zoning districts are prominently, uh, located along the freeway, for example. So just by way of background, that's how kind of our different size, uh, determinations are made for freestanding signs. Uh, but the first question that we want to run you through is just to get, uh, kind of your, uh, policy preference around the amount of freestanding signage that you see in the community. Is it too small? Is it just right or is it too large? So, um, the poll is open. Feel free to select one of those options. And as soon as I have five responses, I will, uh, move us forward.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, sorry, I have a question.
Questions on the instructions here?
Yeah. So this is what we see, not what was on the screen. What we see in the community?
What you see in the community, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for that, Mayor, forgive me, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, kind of your perception of how, uh, the existing sign ordinance is, uh, um, either providing too much or too little signage for, uh, commercial businesses and other sites, basically. So four responses, anyone not responded? Okay. Okay, that's pretty interesting. Uh, that, that's about where the planning commission was on that particular question. So thanks for that. And I should mention, one thing I didn't note is that we will log all of your responses and, uh, uh, save it, and so it will be, uh, part of the record, if that's okay. So this next one is, this one is a little bit of regulatory nuance, but basically there's two approaches to deal with building signs that we frequently see. In some instances, there is, uh, in many cities, they just basically assign a huge bucket of building signs that are provided per building elevation, um, to a particular building, and that covers the whole litany of different building signs that may be mounted on it. So wall signs, canopy signs, awning signs, projecting signs, entrance signs, you just get to take from a bucket. And staff has ways to track how much signage is at a particular property through our permitting, uh, software and other things. Currently, the existing Bloomington sign ordinance tracks all of its signage allowances by sign type. So your allowance for awning or canopy signs is separate from your wall sign. It's separate from your, uh, entrance sign, these other things. So again, thinking about kind of just, uh, destroying some of the complexity, just curious, this may be more of a, a staff pet issue than it is, uh, of council interest, but I would be curious what your perspective is here on this, uh, particular question. Um, I would note that I think, uh, there is, um, there's probably different considerations for how, um, uh, building owners or sign installers would view this question too, I would probably note. But yeah, curious on your preference. The poll's open. I think I've got four responses. Still four? Anyone having? There we go. Thank you. Maybe I'll hold the receiver up a little bit. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, this next issue also has to deal with, uh, um, uh, computation or measurement with respect to signage. So another issue that we're finding and dealing with, um, uh, many sign ordinances across twin cities and the nation is that there's two real, um, methodologies to how you calculate building signage. One has to do with elevation area, others just have to do with the linear frontage. Uh, there is maybe pluses and minuses, uh, to both approaches. This kind of gives you the idea of, um, uh, how they look and work and function in a, a real analysis. One of the challenges that we find, um, in the permitting process is that oftentimes, uh, people don't have accurate architectural drawings of their building, so it becomes a little bit of a, um, uh, not very precise exercise at times. Creating just linear frontage is a way, uh, so that, uh, single tenants within multi-tenant buildings have a very, uh, clear and, uh, um, expectation of how much signage they're allowed to have. So, uh, in terms of just reducing complexity, you know, a linear frontage is, uh, much easier. Having elevation wall area probably favors larger commercial buildings by granting them more signage. It is capped at a certain height, uh, but those are some of the considerations to think about. So should we move to a linear, uh, building, uh, tenant frontage as opposed to area? Yes or no? What this really means is A favors linear, B is the area. Two responses so far. Thank you so much. And I, I will acknowledge that some planning commissioners also said, I don't have a strong opinion. They kind of wanted to add that, um, but we, we still wanted to make, make you, uh, commit on the record. Okay, this next issue, maybe this one is a little bit more, uh, approachable for folks or, uh, clear. Currently, the Bloomington sign ordinance does, um, uh, ha- have some differentiation in its regulation for channel construction signs versus cabinet signs. Uh, our sign ordinance actually does preference channel, uh, construction signs in some ways with larger signage allowances. For those who aren't familiar, channel cut signs are individually cut letters mounted on a raceway versus a cabinet is typically a rectangle, but can be other shapes, uh, where it's just basically a box sign. Um, and one of the things that, uh, regulation that Bloomington has is that if you are a multi-tenant building or a multi-building, uh, development, um, even if it's all a single tenant, you have to have a uniformity of sign construction types throughout your full development. So on this slide here, we have three examples. The top two are both permitted under the existing Bloomington sign ordinance. The bottom, uh, situation is illegal non-conforming, so it's not allowed today. Uh, it's a grandfathered situation. So, um, again, thinking about complexity, kind of destroying some of those things. Just curious about your perspective on should cabinet and channel construction signs be allowed on the same building elevation? Four responses. We're almost there. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. So another thing, you, uh, Mayor, you asked about the, the sign process in 1996. One of the things that happened in 1996 is that there was a community working group, uh, that had a, uh, kind of diverse business interest set that was kind of directly creating some of the signage provisions, and that's, um, uh, kind of interesting in some ways. But, um, the reason I mention that is that in some ways, some of the participation in that did result in kind of use-based signage, uh, to a degree, that some of the kind of key players in that process, from my understanding, uh, did want to advocate for certain types of uses, um, having kind of unique signage considerations. And so I think in, again, kind of reducing some of the complexity, staff would like to move away from this where we can, but recognizing still that some types of development, some land uses, um, do, uh, sometimes warrant some, uh, special consideration. But this question basically is asking is where we can, should we eliminate use-based, uh, sign regulations? And for the record, there's gas stations, high-rise office buildings, hotels, college campuses, um, motor, motor vehicle dealerships. Those are all examples that have use-specific based signage provisions in our existing ordinance. So that's a yes or no question.
Mr. Mayor, Nick, um, when you say they're diff, are they more restrictive or less restrictive? Or is there some combination of them?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Del Sondra, I would say it's some combination, but it can be as, um, uh, it can be as precise as a sign needs to be located within 20 feet of the roof, for example. It has to be channel construction. No cabinet signs are allowed, uh, for this particular use. And then there's, there is special provisions around allowance. So they'll have either greater or less allowance than the sign district in which they're located, depending on where the use is located. So it can go, it can cut both ways and it can be very precise or specific. The one I mentioned about, um, uh, signs being at the top of buildings, that's for the office towers. So you'll, Normandale obviously is relevant to that. Uh, there's some other, uh, distinct ones. Yeah. Thanks for the questions. I appreciate any, any enthusiasm I can get around, uh, sign, sign regulations. So thank you for that. Kind of moving ahead, okay, electronic signs, this is something that people, uh, have more passionate opinions about. Currently in the Bloomington sign ordinance, we differentiate the types of electronic signs that we have in the community. If you are out in the community or other cities, you'll see basically there's two types of these types of signs, and I'm not talking about video signs, that's a whole separate, uh, issue and, uh, matter. Happy to answer questions about that, but electronic signs basically come in the form of, it's basically the same as a changeable copy sign. You'll see just a blank background with text and it'll change the message every once in a while. The other type is, uh, graphic signs. And so what you want to consider here with these next couple of questions is that, um, with electronic signs in general, there is a higher level of visual impact. You know, you think about illumination, you think about brightness, you think about, um, uh, kind of the changing message being eye-catching, particularly to motor, uh, motorists or to people who live near, uh, these sign types. And so these are all kind of considerations. The reason that Bloomington, uh, differentiates these sign types is that we put slightly higher, higher restrictions on the graphic signs because of the higher level of visual, uh, impact associated with them. How much greater the visual impact is, is a little bit, uh, subjective to a degree of who is observing those signs. Uh, there is, uh, academic and other research on that. Uh, I would, uh, I would say that it's, uh, mixed. It's not, there's not like a perfect, this is the exact regulation your community needs to adopt for electronic signs. Some of it is, uh, community aesthetics and preferences to a degree. So, uh, this first question is, should we differentiate these? We've done some research. Other cities do actually just have one category of dynamic signs and they kind of, uh, create regulations around that one type. And so that's kind of the first question, is should we differentiate these sign types? Yes or no? Or should multiple electronic sign types be maintained? I'm sorry. The poll's open. All responses, thank you. Sounds good. Electronic sign locations, I, I kind of explained, uh, the, um, uh, why we have two different sign types. If we don't, um, differentiate them, this might influence or inform your answer to this question. Uh, but right now currently, graphic signs are not allowed in residential zoning districts. So you think about what sites that includes, it includes city parks, it includes, uh, fire stations, it includes, um, uh, places of assembly. Uh, there's a number of institutional type uses that have residential zoning. It's not just, uh, multifamily or other buildings like that. So, uh, consideration there. So should elect, should graphic signs be allowed in residential districts? The poll's open. Wow, that one was incredibly fast. Okay. Kind of split. Yeah, we need, we need Councilmember Muah. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, electronics, sign, static dwell times, this is another element. Maybe, you know, we could revisit the first question, the first electronic sign question later after looking at these ones. Maybe I should have ran it in reverse order, but, um, the city's, uh, sign ordinance has different dwell times for, uh, the, for our different electronic sign types. If you have changeable copy only, you can change that every eight seconds. If you have graphics, you actually have to have a static dwell time of 20 minutes. And so that's a pretty significant, uh, dwell time. But again, thinking about motorists coming by, distraction, whatever the case may be, um, there's reasons for those dwell times. Uh, the range of what we've seen from other cities is very vast. We've seen dwell times as low as three seconds and we've seen dwell times as high as 60 minutes for changing messages. So it's really a wide range of outcomes that we see here. But we, we presented two options here for you, would be to retain the current standard. That's option A of eight seconds and 20 minutes. Or option B would be to reduce the dwell time for graphics signs. And I would be, um, not painting a full picture. I know there's, uh, some staff in Parks and Rec who, uh, do have some desire to implement more of these sign types, um, into their, uh, facilities, at least they're more larger, more prominent parks. Four responses, thank you. That's okay. No, no, that's okay. Yep. I'd be a bad game show host, that's for sure. Bad directions. Thank you for that answer. Uh, so there's some other restrictions to consider. There are communities that, uh, restrict the size of these sign types. We currently don't restrict the size of electronic signs. We also do not have an operational time restriction, meaning that, uh, they have to be turned off at 10:00 PM, say for example, and not turn back on till in the morning time. There are some state energy codes that call for that, but it'd be much easier kind of enforcement environment if it was just directly in the city sign ordinance that they had to be, uh, turned off when in proximity to residential uses, for example. So yeah, here we, there's actually, that slide is wrong. There should be four options. Yeah. So should the city consider additional electronic sign restrictions? Si- uh, size, operation time, both those two things, or D, no additional restrictions? The poll's open.
Y'all seem to know what you're doing. I apologize. This is, this is in general or based on the previous question, which was about residential areas?
Yeah, thank you for that qualifying question. Most of the cities that have additional restrict, well, uh, size, I would say, could be applicable anywhere and everywhere. I would say the turning them off is more in proximity to residential, uh, properties. Thank you. Good clarification there. Okay. Thanks so much. So this is, uh, hopefully this isn't back into the, um, weeds here a little bit, but, uh, at our multi-fan, our multi-tenant. but at our multi-tenant buildings and multi-site developments, as well as some special use sign types require what's called a uniform sign design. It's basically a plan that a property owner puts forth that distributes all the amount of signage that they're allowed to have and kind of carves it up amongst all their tenants. Right now, it's a requirement that these multi-tenant properties do this. It is not common amongst other sign ordinances to require that every property owner provide one of these plans for their, for their multi-tenant centers. It is, it's a little bit disparate in terms of what property owners' perspectives are on it. Some don't like it at all because it creates another permit or another approval that they have to go through a process with staff with. There is a few instances of property owners that like having this plan on file because staff directly references, but when they receive a sign permit at property X, they look to the uniform sign design. Like this is the standards for your tenant place. If you don't like it, it's kind of, it's a civil issue with you and the owner. So what here, we're proposing three potential options. One would be to eliminate them altogether, you know, and especially if you went to a linear building sign, it'd be quite easy for each tenant to understand what their allowance is and move forward. The second option B would be to make this an optional process that only property owners who prefer this pathway could apply and seek this approval, which would kind of designate which tenant spaces get what amount of signage. And then the third option C would be just to maintain the status quo, the existing requirement. So the poll is open. Thank you for your responses. Okay. Maintain the existing process. Murals. This one's kind of a fun one. So right now, this has less to do with signage. It is a little bit to do with signage, but it's not solely focused on signage. Right now, it actually has more to do with the city's exterior material provisions in our code. We don't allow painting of primary exterior materials. And so what this question that we'll ask you here as part of this process is just, should the city pursue some, some city code amendments to those provisions, which would allow greater pathways or allowances towards murals? To inform your answer to that, I should add that I've been working with the creative placemaking director, something that they, if the council and the planning commissioner are supportive of this approach, something that they would put forward to their body. And I don't know, I think it would likely come to you as part of our sign ordinance too. But basically a murals policy, you know, what are the maintenance expectations? What are all the requirements you have to fulfill to have an approved mural? And that would basically create some type of exception to our coatings restriction for approved murals. So should amendments and policy be adapted to make murals easier to install in Bloomington? Poll's open.
Thank you. So in terms of the mural piece, I overheard, you know, the assistant, you know, is there any impact there in terms of, you know, if you go with mural route? Does that impact in terms of how businesses, you know, does that open up anything for them that we wouldn't open up before? If we're doing, I just, I'm just trying to understand what that opens up or if it doesn't make any difference at all in terms of, you know, so I do, if I open up for murals for creative placemaking, does that allow me as a business then to paint whatever I want on my, you know, for the, for the brick, let's say, for my, my building?
Yeah, Mayor Busy, Councilmember Lowman, thanks for that question. With respect to signage, any commercial message you'd be attempting to incorporate into your mural would be subject to signage allowances. We do need to research that a little bit more in terms of how commercial messages get incorporated. But basically what we're seeing in other communities is that they try and restrict commercial messages as part of murals. If you own a flower shop, you certainly could have a mural that included flowers. But if you were a, I'm trying to use an example that's not so closely aligned with something that happened. If you were selling a particular brand of canoes at a shop, then it couldn't very obvi, if, if this was not a, if it was beyond the scope of the signage allowance that you're allowed, it couldn't be very obviously with you that logo and brand of, if that makes sense.
Let me ask a follow-up question. It's really interesting that you ask this, Councilmember Lowman. So for example, back in the day, this wouldn't happen now, but if I had a tobacco shop, I couldn't, I couldn't make Joe the Camel my mural, is what you're saying?
Precisely.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. But if I'm a, if I'm a brewery, for example, I can have, I can have somebody drinking beer. I just can't have it say my name or some other like label's name.
I think that's fair, yeah, Mayor Councilmember, I think that's fair to say. Yeah, hops, barrels, sure.
Okay. So that, well, you brought up the question, like what really is the difference between commercial, you know, speech and non-commercial speech? And so I'm glad for the clarification. Thanks for bringing that up, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor and members, I'll just add a little bit. I've been looking at some mural policies from other cities and they, there are certain types of speech that are outside of the First Amendment that we can regulate without fear, and that's generally obscenity. So things that are sexually related or fighting words, insults, you know, things that tend to in, what do you call it? Instigate violence, that type of thing. So a lot of the policy that has been seen, they do include those kind of content regulations. But other than that, it's usually just, are the materials good to stay in the building? Just objective stuff like that. So it's, it's more common around the country to have these type of mural permits now. But we have, we have that building materials kind of thing we have to look out for first, so.
So let me, let me, let me ask this a little bit differently. I mean, and that's certainly what I, one question I had, but my other question is, if I could concrew to paint my entire, you know, building as a mural, you know, to get away with, you know, a certain color scheme. You know, let's say I wanted to do like, like a target, I don't know, kind of a target thing around my entire building, you know, to, you know, in mural, is there, and I call that a mural, but obviously that's like, you know.
Mm-hmm. It did, yeah, just.
Is there any way to regulate that? I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. I mean, it might not stop me from voting one way or the other. I just, I just want to understand what, what the implications of what you're saying.
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, it'll, it'll depend on how we kind of define it, I think, and set the parameters around what is a mural and what isn't a mural. So depending on how loosely or how detailed you want to get with paint or, you know, a lot of times it's either painting or adding like a, like a screen and then attaching it to the wall, that type of thing, like a screen print or something like that. So a lot of it, we're still in kind of the drafting stage. So we're going to take some feedback and go back on and look at what we can do.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mayor, I think this, I think there's two separate issues. As one is there's an evaluation by staff to determine, is this a commercial message? And if so, then it should be subject to sign, the sign ordinance and the limitations of how much signage you're allowed. In many cases, many commercial and industrial properties in the city already have, you know, utilized a lot their signage allowance in various ways. So using the mural process in order to get more commercial message on your building is not going to be a violation, or is going to be a violation of the sign ordinance in many cases. In addition to that, I mean, I've talked with Alejandro Palenca about this some in terms of the development of a Bloomington policy. But as we're reviewing policies from other cities, they have an approval process. And I don't want to say that it's subjective, but there has to be some artistic elements and value and kind of parameters that are identified and defined in the murals policy. And so it's kind of a, I think it requires, does require more research, but obviously we don't want to put the city in like a bad legal position. That's why we have a good legal staff. But yeah, I mean, it's not, it's a tricky issue. I under, yeah.
But, but I think you're right in the idea of looking at existing ordinances elsewhere, existing policies and ordinances elsewhere, because there's, there are some very attractive murals in downtown Minneapolis that, you know, are not necessarily advertising, but unless you consider advertising for the Prince label to be advertising. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a matter of just putting it all together. We are, you're right.
Yeah, maybe the last thing I'd say about it too is murals are expensive. Like they're not, it's, they are not easy or cheap to install. And so I think there's easier ways to get more commercial messages on a building than pursuing a mural. So. Thank you. Should, so on, on to billboards. We're, we're kind of presenting three options here. As Kevin Toski indicated, the city's current provisions are that we restrict or prohibit new billboards on the basis of them being off-premises signs. So three options here would be just to retain and off the basis of the City of Austin case, we can continue to regulate off-premises signs. And I would say that doesn't just apply to billboards. That's, you know, that's people putting signs for businesses that are not located on that site. It happens quite frequently at times. So A would be, with respect to billboards though, A would be to retain our current standards that prohibit additional billboards. B would do allow additional billboard subject to standards, so wider allowance. Or C, a third option would be to consider opening selected areas only to additional billboards. So the poll is open.
Sorry, I just want to make sure, so billboards are different than signs, right? So I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, that we're just talking about billboards in this one, because.
Correct. Thank you. Off-premises signs above a certain area in our ordinance, yeah. But inherently off-premises typically. One more response. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate the direction there. That's the last one. So thanks. I hope that was kind of fun or semi-good way to do that. I don't know. We, I think the polls work better in electronic meeting environment where, but then you're, then you're at home and that's not as fun either. So unless you had a device here, I suppose. Do you have any questions? I don't, I don't even know what I'm doing anymore. Sorry.
Any questions, so he doesn't have to riff anymore. Councilmember Del Sandro.
Thank you. In, in general, this was great and I totally, I think you do want to geek out on signage and that makes me happy. Just nerd to nerd, if you will. The, the poll questions and the staff recommendations that we, or the assessments that we got, didn't 100% align, not in a, not in a bad way, but just that I couldn't necessarily follow from the report that we got to the questions, what you were hoping to get from us as well. So I wondered if you could provide, I guess, just a little bit of context for a couple of the other things that were in the staff report. And I'll try to get to it really quickly here. There was, so the legal stuff made a ton of sense. And so, so let me first ask, is there an expectation that the questions that you asked would engender a requirement to change the sign districts themselves? Or is that, like, is that an option or is that off the table? And for the most part, the sign districts are stable in your review here. And now we're talking about what can and can't happen within them.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Del Sandro, with respect to the sign districts, staff is supportive of them. Generally, we think there's some opportunity to reduce the number of them. Potentially, two of them are single zoning district, sign districts. So that, you know, potentially could be revised. But basically, the, the communities that regulate signage just based on land use have, and that, it's not, not a negative thing, they just have a, they have lesser range or lesser variety of land uses than a community like Bloomington does. There's just a lot of complexity and a lot of different, the different types of developments and the land use of those developments in the community. And given kind of some of the locational elements associated with some of our zoning districts, you know, you think about C3 and these others, heavy commercial districts that are along 494 and 35W and kind of over by 77 in the South Loop District. We just think there's some value in how it's been laid out with the existing sign district process. So could we arrange a scenario where it would be driven more by land use, like some communities have done? We could. But then it would be grouping a large, it'd be a very long list of land uses. And in some cases, some land uses don't fall neatly in, say, an industrial bucket versus a commercial bucket. Think of self-storage as an example of that, for example. And so when you're talking about, you know, mixed-use development, you're talking about other types of development that kind of fall in multiple buckets, it's a little bit tricky. So the sign districts is, we do recommend carrying that forward, potentially reducing, but carrying it forward.
Yeah, great. Second question that I have is related to the notion of, in the report, of incidental and temporary signage. So, you know, I, I know that there are, there have been conflicts. For example, when Nine Mile Brewing opened, they couldn't put a sign up that indicated where you turn in, but right across the street, there's this massive for lease sign and, you know, they're wondering why their sign and not my sign and all this other stuff. How, how are we trying, like, what, maybe was there legal, is there a legal requirement now to stop determining the difference between those two signs because of content? And number two, what, what do you expect, like, what are you planning to bring back to us in terms of any recommendations as it relates to temporary signage?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Del Sandro, so on this particular issue, I think the city has kind of left with a choice. You certainly can amend or tweak our signage regulations related to incidental and directional signage. I think in that particular case, Bloomington has a separate category of directional sign standards, which I think came into play in that particular instance. But, you know, in speaking with John Baker and other people about these sign types, these are the most hard types of signs to regulate, frankly, because a lot of them, you know, don't have necessarily inherently a large commercial message associated with them. But if you don't put limitations, in some instances, not on all properties. In some instances, you can have properties that just have incidental signs scattered all over the place. And so I think you're kind of, to a degree, and this is frankly, an arena that we need to do a little bit more research on. We haven't landed somewhere as staff on this particular question. But the, the, kind of the options for approach are to take a more deregulatory approach towards incidental signage. And what you can clearly see from the public right of way, that's kind of one of the tests we're seeing. That if a normal sighted person can see the sign, clearly read the message, and it doesn't, you know, have a commercial component to it, then maybe you, you just allow those to occur. Other cities take a more regulatory approach. So that's something we're still kind of grappling with.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I have is that there was some mention in here about signage for, for example, the expo. And I'm just curious about what, what work you, what work specific to the expo you're either already considering or what you think you will need to consider as it relates to the sign ordinance?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Member, excuse me, Mayor Councilmember Del Sandro, so with respect to the expo, this isn't just touch on signage, it could touch on other land use elements as well. But there may be some considerations for how do you create kind of a, you know, it's not a deregulated zone of, to a degree, but kind of creating a little bit of, it's similar to the master sign plan process, which the Mall of America has pursued. The existing sign ordinance has an approval process by which you get kind of signage that does not vibe well with the existing signage provisions. So with an event like that, there could be potential to pursue this special approval on the basis of, you know, very unique circumstances, obviously. And that could exceed sign types, it could, signage allowances, setbacks, all these different things could potentially be considered in this type of approval or document. The alternative to that is, again, taking a more deregulatory approach with respect to signage during the course of the event. So we're kind of exploring both those things, but that second option involves more issues than just, I mean, we're still contemplating a regulatory or a development review process. You know, imagine every building, to a degree, we'd be going through Planning Commissioner Council. The timelines associated with the event and some of those things are going to make that challenging. And so the, the event itself kind of calls for a different regulatory approach or process. And so we're still evaluating that. Maybe Glenn should talk about this to a degree, but it's something we're talking about in the office. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Members, I've been trying to draft it, just in, in the initial drafting stage. I've tried to leave a few outs where I know there can be outs, where I'll put in things like, unless expressly permitted by the city code, like for billboards, I did that, just to give us an option where we can add in a billboard allowance for expo or another event, something like that, where they're not, they're not permitted now, but if we do a code change, they easily could be. So kind of built that in, just thinking about, and then thinking about like the Veterans Memorial and things like that. You know, how is signage for art displays and, and that kind of governed? So these things are on our radar, but still thinking through them.
Councilmember Lowman.
Oh, Mayor, I promise I'd be brief and I'll be as brief as I possibly can. I just want to just, just say, just a moment of personal privilege here, that in 1996, this council member was a planning intern with the Bloomington Rotary Noon through the Bloomington Public Schools. And one of the main things that we worked on at that point in time was a sign ordinance piece. It was one of the various things that was going on during that period of time. So it's funny to see a full circle.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. We'll report back when we have more to share. And I think, not to belabor this any longer, but Councilmember Del Sandro, you asked like, you know, where if staff and PC and CC doesn't align on certain things? We'll certainly explain our preferences more robustly in some, in some areas where. more robustly in some, in some areas where we might not align. But ultimately, you're the decision maker. We're going to follow your direction. We're going to try and be concise and well-organized and with, good with legal. But obviously, we're going to follow your direction. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, our last item of the evening is item 5.2, our city council policy and issue updates. I will start off with a review of our listening session this evening. We heard from Ms. Sally Ness, and she had some comments for us regarding changing the city code to allow an institution of higher education to allow retail and office space. And I think that's something that will be coming up before too long, I think, in front of this body, and we'll have a further discussion on that then. And she was our only speaker this evening. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything this evening?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I have a quick legislative update just in terms of some activity that's going on there. The governor's been rolling out different policy statements, and we're tracking those in anticipation of his total budget release coming up shortly. We're especially interested in some public safety and some housing and some of his economic development initiatives, so we're paying attention to those. We're also doing work with our local delegation on some expo-related issues, which is a little bit more of a, an approach that we thought we'd be taking, we thought we'd be taking a little bit of a stand-back approach. But due to some of the timing of the decision and when work needs to be getting done, we're going to work with our legislative delegation on some initiatives there as well. So we will share that information with the council and working with the delegation when they have something ready to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Any questions of Mr. Verbrugge on that one? Very good. Counsel, anything to bring forward? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Hi, thank you, Ms. Mayor. No takers just yet on, on having us as their teammates for the bridging bed thing, but I'll let you know.
Good to know. Thank you.
I did have, I wanted to throw out one idea that I thought might be of interest. As we are formulating work plans and things like that, one of the, the things I've noticed is that we don't have, we have variances in our land use policies, but we don't have variances potentially for licensing. And it's doable to do that, but it, it's not something that we have a mechanism for. And there's been a couple of instances in the last couple of weeks that have come to my attention that, that where, where, if we had one, it might have been a nice and easy way to kind of solve the ongoing issue that was in front of them. And so I don't know, number one, I don't know if it's legal to have a variance policy for licensing issue. That's one question. And whether or not we're prohibited by state regulation or something like that. But if not, I'm wondering if it would be something that we could think about implementing as a process so that we, we had a mechanism for solving some of these conflicts that didn't include, you know, no, or an undue burden on a particular, you know, small business or other things like that, is just trying to work around, you know, legitimate issues. I'm, I'm just curious. Anybody have any experience with that?
I don't recall anything on that. I think the first question is for the lawyers to even see if it's legal. I'm not even sure if it is.
I don't know.
We, we're going to have to take a look at that. You've stopped the man. Good work.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLaSandro and I did have an opportunity to talk about this. So one example is, you know, a retailer who is selling edibles, and the edibles have a distance separator from sensitive uses, and the same retailer selling tobacco, which doesn't have a distance separator. And so part of the question is, why are there different standards for the distance sensitivity? I know that's one issue, but there are probably a couple of different issues here.
Yes, that's right. And, and what I didn't want to do is necessarily reopen the regulation itself, but to potentially find a vehicle where you could grandfather somebody in in that situation. Also, a conflict between license types. So in the case of our friends at Nine Mile, their beer license prohibits them from having another type of license. They don't want another type of license on an ongoing basis, but for events, for example, they'd like the ability to offer, have somebody offer wine as part of an option. That's a problem at the moment because of conflicts within the regulation. So do we have a way to quickly work through a variance that would allow them, you know, to have a catering option from time to time or whatever? So it's just things of that nature that it seems like a variance process might be a faster way to do it than to bring the regulation back for some, you know, machinations. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Members, don't forget your clickers.
Sorry about, now I'm interrupting again.
You know, I, it's a super intriguing question. Liquor is largely regulated at the state level. And so I guess I'm curious, when I, before I go and research it, it sounds like it's also sort of a hybrid of land use and licensing. Is that accurate?
That's a good question. It was, it's mostly, I mean, based on these couple of conversations, they've been specifically about the license and not the land use. So I don't know if there's also a land use license combo platter there, but in these cases, in these cases, they've both, mostly been conflicts at the licensing level, not at the land use level. Because the land uses themselves have been established already, and now these licensing are, licensing issues are coming to the fore.
Yeah. Interesting. Well, I'll look into it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Councilmember Lohman?
See, I just wanted to mention that the, the final numbers for the fire pension, Mayor, will be out tomorrow, or they're out there. And they'll have some impacts going forward. And so we'll have a chance to look at that tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow night. And then secondarily, in our sustainability work group, we had, and then I, at our last commission meeting, we talked about the idea of having a plastics challenge, and they kind of tasked me with bringing it back to the council to ask if we would be, you know, similar to our, our other, I thought about calling you to see if you'd be our ringleader, to see if we can take on, it looks like there's another Bloomington group that's out there, and there's various other cities. And basically, to just make a long, a very long story short, there's going to be more details in the, in the, in the CMI. And then, but the basic concept is that we would try to learn about plastics by taking on various tasks to reduce the amount of plastics that we use individually, and that would help to add points as we take on other teams. And I'm hoping that the rest of the council would be open to, to doing that, so.
Counsel, anything else? Very good. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for your discussion this evening. Thanks to the staff. Thanks to everybody who's tuned in and participated in our meeting tonight. Have a good night. Have a good rest of your week.